Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exit which is to your left of this room. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs and do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purposes of a record and minutes, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in order that they appear on the agenda, extra copies of which are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, and give his or her address, and then present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If this case is a public hearing, we'll be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed. A public input in the board will then move on to a decision. No further input is allowed at this point. Before we get started, I will, Michelle, like to amend our itinerary here and move the second item to first, if we could.
Sure.
As a, I believe this would be, thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any votes? Thank you. I made the motion.
You need to...
I don't know if we do either, but...
Okay, alright.
So introduce the second here.
We're good? Okay. Okay. So, first item that we're gonna hear this evening is case number PB 1309-2. Upon the matter of request by Passaro Associates, acting as agent for Anoop Singh for preliminary and final site plan approval, to reconstruct the existing cashier's booth with a 20-foot by 25-foot new cashier's booth with site-related improvements on premises 2417 Culver Road in a C commercial district.
Before we get started, I am an employee of Passaro Associates in another division and I have nothing to do with this project currently.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate that if, just because you're employed by the same organization, if you don't have any interest in it and you haven't worked on it, you're fine to proceed with this, man.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board. My name is Joseph Jacobs, Passaro Associates. I am representing Anoop Singh of St. Paul Culver Convenience Store Incorporated. Their property is at 2417 Culver Road. It is a third of an acre at the southwest intersection of Echo Street and Culver Road. The existing structure that is used for cashier purposes is an 8-by-12 structure. It's going to be demolished and replaced with a 20-by-25-foot structure. The structure's intended to allow for customers to pay on the interior. Additionally, we're seeking a zoning, two zoning variances, area variances for front and, uh, front setback and front corner setback. Additionally, with the proposed reconstruction of the building, we are doing some miscellaneous site improvements. One of which, which is the removal of the existing shed that's located at the northeast corner of the property, and we're gonna propose a new shed at the rear of the lot. We're going to replace the existing timber fence with a new timber rail fence. The shed is being used for, currently, for emergency, emergency storage, emergency supplies in case of the spill, spill prevention. Additionally, meeting at the workshop, there were some concerns about green space. We've identified, uh, to recap, we identified some areas by the northern access, access drive to try to remove some green space. Through an auto turn analysis, we were, we counted that space out due to need for maneuverability for delivery of the fuel. We discussed a, an alternate location where the existing shed is going, is, and is going to be removed, that we have proposed to turn into lawn area. The existing sign that's gonna be in that location will have some protective bollards. Additionally, we're gonna be putting some lawn or some, uh, street plantings as well. There was a concern about the barrel at the rear of the lot. That barrel is actually used for refilling the tanks. It's for recovery in case there's any miscellaneous spilling from the actual pipes. So it's required, the applicant is asked, or the applicant is proposing to store the barrel next to the shed located on the sheet plan, or on the first sheet. Additionally, another concern was refuse, the location of refuse containers that is also gonna be located at the rear of the property near, uh, near the shed. Currently, there's a tote being used. And then, lastly, information regarding the structure, the, um, you were looking for just a little bit more. We attempted to get ahold of the prefabricated structure manufacturer. The, um, they're still forthcoming with information. I noticed that the second page of the sheet plan, they did not print as well as I wanted to. I do have some supplemental images. They're the same thing at, the same thing as what I presented at the workshop, but if you guys want to take a look at it, I have copies up here. And, uh, the location of the doors, I know Pete had a, um, a concern. The, what I was able to get from the manufacturer is that they build the suit, uh, so you can, uh, they essentially, everything is built to order, so we can place ingress egress at any location. I have shown that the front of the building facing the east property line will have the main ingress egress point. There's a miscellaneous side door if needed for maintenance. And, uh, that's it. That's all I got. If you guys want, um, the pictures, let me know. I can...
Yeah, sure. Pass those up. We can return them to you. Bernie, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Greg?
Thank you, Peter. Uh, Mr. Jacobs, this is a whole lot better package than what we saw last time, two weeks ago, so thank you for that. I see that you've incorporated just about everything that we talked about in the workshop meeting two weeks ago. A couple of questions, though.
Sure.
The proposed 8-by-10 shed that's going in the back corner, is that gonna be on a concrete pad?
Uh, the shed can be placed on a number of materials. It could be wood, it could be a structural, um, granular slab, or it could also be a concrete slab.
Let me put it a different way. Can it be put on concrete?
Yes.
Um, second question. In the retail area of this building, are they gonna be selling any motor oil?
Anoop, uh, do you plan on selling motor oil at all?
We have been selling the mobile...
Could you, could you, I'm sorry, you have to...
Identify yourself, please.
Just come to the podium and identify yourself.
Uh, my name is Anoop Singh. I own the, this property, and we have been operating this last 10 years. Uh, we do have a couple quarts of the mobile aisle. That's whenever a customer wants, somebody is low on the aisle. We don't store more than that at all. It's just for selling to the customers in quarts.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't it a requirement that if you sell oil, you also have to accept it for recycling?
Uh, so far, we never have been in that situation. If that is the case, we will not be selling, I mean, neither we will accept it or we will not be selling the, uh, motor oil.
Okay. Um, the only other thing I have is, is a comment really, that there was a, a pre-existing noncompliance in terms of how much macadam or asphalt is on, is on the property, and you have added, looks to me, just shy of 200 square feet of green space over in that corner where the shed was. Not as a condition for, for my approval, but I would certainly ask you to consider to increasing that amount of green space even more, taking some of that pavement out of there. So just as a suggestion.
Um, is there anywhere we can have that more? We were increasing at this, excuse me. Yeah, but we were increasing here too. No? So where else we can...
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Thank you. Comment noted.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Ray?
Um, I believe, Mr., excuse me. I believe Mr. Goder has addressed most of the issues I have. I do like to see, and this is again not a condition for approval, but I do like to see garbage encased in some way or another, whether it be a tote, dumpster, whatever it might be.
Uh, to clarify, like a corral or...
Thank you. Yes, thank you for that word.
Anything else, Ray?
No, thank you.
Jay?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I have two things. One is that I don't really understand the conversation that's happened regarding the oil. You sell oil now, and if it is a condition that you have to accept oil if you sell it, then is, I understand that you're saying, if that ever happens, I'm gonna stop selling oil?
No. If we sell oil, we will accept it. We will be accepting oil in this situation. So you will be accepting oil in this location. So where does that oil get stored between the time it...
How do we know that that's a law? I mean...
If I'm not mistaken, let...
We don't know that's a law.
Let me throw something out, and I believe if you change oil, if you're in that business to change oil, then you have to accept it back. I'm not certain, Greg, you might know better, but I'm not certain on a retail location.
They're not changing oil.
You know, exactly.
I don't know that the auto parts store takes back old oil just because they sell quart oil.
I mean, I don't know. Greg, do you know?
Well, I certainly don't know with, with absolute certainty, but I do know that the places that sell oil on a retail basis do take it back.
Larry's chopping at the bit.
Go, Larry.
We're, I think I remember, and maybe they don't sell it anymore, but Wegmans sells an awful lot of stuff, and I think I remember buying motor oil at Wegmans.
I do too. I can't imagine that if you came in with a, you know...
I mean, other than the fact that there might be physical provisions for this somewhere on site, which I don't know that the shed wouldn't address, I don't know why we would get involved in the legal aspects of whether they sell oil and take oil back, other than the fact that if you, we don't want barrels of oil sitting on the site.
I will suggest that you're entitled to make, naturally, when you do the site plan approval, preliminary or final, you can entertain conditions. So, um, if it should occur that the vendor is going to accept oil, you could make it a condition that they return to the planning board for further approval with regard to how they're gonna accept it, where it's gonna be stored, and how it's gonna be transferred off the site.
Well, I, I would like to see the town become a leader in this and saying, and telling the man whether he does or does not have to do this. I mean, I don't know where he finds that information out. I wouldn't know where to look. But if it's, if it's, if it's certainly not a requirement by federal law or county or state or someone, then the prerogative belongs to him. And if it does belong to him and he does it, then yes, we should have some say in where the dickens it goes.
I mean, we don't legislate other laws that are on the books. I mean, you know, if he sells liquor, he's gotta have a liquor license. If he's, you know, checks IDs, I mean, we don't tell him, if he's selling beer, he's gotta check IDs. Well, that's not the point. The point simply was that if there is gonna be some means for collecting this recyclable oil, what does that means gonna be that is within our purview?
Well, I think the, my, back, then back to my point that I made before, that if you are selling oil, it's, and it's legally obligated to collect waste oil, then we do not want the waste oil stored exterior to the site, on the site.
Uh, may I point out something, yes, sir?
Yes.
There's a barrel sitting at the site. Legally, we are supposed to do a weekly inspection of all our pumps, sumps, oil, everything. So what we do is, even if we find a water there, that water is assumed to be a contaminated water. So what we do is, we pump that water into our barrel. And when the barrel is full, I have another couple sites, what we do is, we group it, and disposal company comes. They will pump the, either take the barrels away, or they will pump out the contaminated oil, water, whatever is in there, and they will dispose it off legally. We are paying for that, and they give us a receipt for disposing of that oil.
Right. The, if I may, the, we talked and looked at and saw the, the barrel, the curtain, the current barrel existing on, on the, on the back, on the, on the west side of the property.
Yes, sir.
As the, you said it's necessary as part of the, um, emission of, of fumes from one filling, is that correct?
No, if we get any contamination, like, say, a gentleman comes, his car is leaking oil, so what...
Where is, you're gonna move that barrel and to where?
No, we don't move, we call this disposal company, one of them. They will come and suck everything, either they will, we'll, they will take away the barrel.
Can we solve this just by creating a corral that will hold the barrel?
No, no, we don't. We pay for that, so just disposing of, we don't sell it.
I mean, a, a corral that'll contain any barrels and a garbage can adjacent to the shed?
Uh, so far, in the, the garbage can, somebody throws it away, I have not noticed that, but what we do, receive during our maintenance, weekly maintenance, we put that into that barrel. And that barrel is...
You're talking about two different, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I think what we're trying to say is that, um, we're going to house the barrel somewhere in, either in the shed or in a corral.
Yes.
By, by, and we're talking specifically about the, uh, the barrel used for contamination.
Yes.
And that, and that barrel will be intermittently disposed of, you know, in accordance with PBS law, petroleum bulk storage law in United, uh, New York State, D.C. Uh, and, uh, yeah, I, that, does that answer the question?
Well, the, the second barrel then is a separate issue.
The refuse barrel?
No, the barrel for excess oil if you take it, or the used oil.
Correct. That'll be different.
It seems to me like an eight-foot linear space should be able to store two barrels and a tote.
You are correct.
And then by five foot wide, so we'll say eight by five or something.
Right, and there's also additional materials needed for spill prevention, you know, the absorbent material, and maybe some seasonal, uh, uh, equipment for maintenance, but yes, there should be adequate space.
So fenced corral eight by five adjacent to the shed will house any extraneous barrels and refuse devices?
Yeah, and we'll, and we'll make sure it's on the south...
Corral.
We'll make sure it's on the south side, uh, so it's somewhat screened.
Yes. At this time, I believe that closes, did you have any more questions, Jay?
I'm not sure I asked my first one yet.
Alright, go ahead, Jay, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, so what's this, I, I think you actually covered the stuff that I was concerned about. I was concerned that there was gonna, there's a, there's a barrel, I wanna get rid of that barrel, or get it at least out of sight. And the barrel, I mean, if you have to have a barrel to pick stuff up, it would be good if the barrel were, um, you know, if it's dinged or rusty or whatever, it should, even though it's sort of out of sight, it's still there, so it would be good to get that as, either in a place or in, in a condition that it's, it doesn't...
I think right now, we're looking at a five-foot by eight-foot fenced...
What are you talking about with a corral? That's a...
Fenced corral, like a garbage, like a refuse, like a dumpster enclosure.
So you're gonna come to with a proposal to the town, and the town's gonna okay, or are you gonna give that to, um, to Larry?
You know, we're already with a board-on-board fence?
Yes.
That's what I'm gonna put in as stipulation in the, that we'll have a five-foot by eight-foot board-on-board fenced corral immediately adjacent to the south side of the shed.
Alright, excellent.
Alright?
Thank you.
Alright. Is that okay? Alright. Now we'll open it up to public input. This time, if anyone would like to speak in regards to this application, they may do so.
Richard Barone, 154 Alwood Drive. I'm gonna speak to the procedure. Mr. Chairman, you mentioned that your firm, the client here today, the applicant, it's your firm's client, if I heard correctly. Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know if it's a direct conflict, but it sure as hell is an appearance of a conflict for you to sit there, and not that you're gonna vote or not, but to preside over this proceedings. I've sat on this planning board for 14 years and the town board for 10 years, and I don't ever recall anyone on the town board or planning board would sit on a decision for an applicant when his firm will benefit from this client. I suggest you stand down and recluse yourself from not just voting on this issue, but discontinue presiding over the proceedings here. It's an appearance of conflict. Your firm will make money from this application if it is approved. That's clear. It's an appearance of conflict, sir. I suggest you step down. Thank you. I can't believe you're doing this.
I have, I have already given the chairman an advisement, and I, and again, I will say to each and every one of you, I don't have an interest in the outcome, and I'm, and if you get the impression that I do, I don't. I've reviewed the chairman's role at Passaro and Associates, and I am familiar with and have reviewed the hierarchy in that particular organization, how it's, how it's broken up. And I am giving him an advisement that despite Mr. Barone's indication that there may be an appearance of impropriety, there is not. If he feels confident and he has made the representation in the disclosure in front of this board and in front of the applicant and in front of the public, then I believe it is appropriate for him to sit on this matter. The board can of course follow my recommendation or not, but that is my recommendation. It is not inappropriate for you, under this set of circumstances, to sit as the chairman of the board.
Next, anybody?
I'd like to move that, um, we, we, we vote as a, as a board and say whether or not you sit on this matter or not.
I don't think that's, with all due respect, I don't think you need to do that.
I don't need to do it, but may I?
No, I don't, I really don't think that would be an appropriate exercise of the board. It's a decision that the chairman of the board makes, and the chairman is entitled to make that decision based upon the recommendation he's received.
Okay.
My name is Linda Waters. I live at 2403 Culver Road, which is right next door to the proposed area here. And I guess I have a few concerns. When I got the notice in the mail that said a 20-by-25-foot building, to me, that's not expanding the existing cashier's booths. And from what I understand, there's gonna be a convenience store there. My concerns are, living next door, there's no fence along my property, between refiners and my property. I am constantly cleaning up the garbage that customers at that establishment just throw all over. So when you talk about a garbage receptacle in the back of the property, I would hope somebody would clean up the garbage that's constantly blowing over into my yard. Um, I'm concerned about parking. You're talking about more green space with the tanks and things. I'm concerned where all the customers gonna park, not only if they're getting gas, now they have a convenience store that they're gonna be running into. So again, where's parking gonna be? Are they gonna be parking on Echo Street? Are they gonna be parking on Culver Road, wherever they find a spot? I'm concerned about noise. Living next door to the gas station, I constantly hear the cars there, stereos blaring, you name it. So I'm concerned about the hours of operation. Security for my home, I've had customers wandering into my yard, peeing in my bushes. So I mean, I have a lot of concerns. I mean, a gas station is one thing. Now we're talking about adding a convenience store, which is gonna increase the amount of traffic in that area. So that's just my concerns as the next-door neighbor.
What was your address again?
2403 Culver Road. And I guess too, another concern is, I just spent a considerable amount of money on my house four years ago, making it more presentable because I do live on a main street. I put siding, new roof, windows. So I'm also concerned about the decrease in my property value now. So...
Jeff Goldblatt, Solid Waste Advisors, 128 Parkside Crescent. A couple of things in regards to the, um, to the rollout cart for garbage and the storage of oil. Section 192 of the code, which deals with refuse and recycling issues in the town, I can tell you, does not address oil. Typically, it's municipal solid waste and/or recyclable materials. So there's really nothing in the code that I'm, that covers the storage of oil, whether it's in, and I know, for example, the former Jiffy Lube and the former Midas Muffler, uh, when I had to have discussions with code enforcement when those businesses closed because they were tardy in clearing the site. Uh, one used barrels and the other used a, a two-yard dumpster specifically built to hold liquid material, so it can be captured both ways. I think the applicant pointed that out. The code does not also specify that an enclosure is, is required, though it's, it's fine if you have it, for the storage of a, of a 96-gallon rollout cart. Typically, what the code is calling for is for an enclosure for a steel container two to 10 yards typically referred to as a dumpster. And there are a number of commercial properties in town, amazingly, to this day, almost 20 years after the fact, that are still not in compliance with the code. So I just wanted to clarify that point. The applicant can certainly do an enclosure for these two particular things that you're talking about, but I just wanted to clarify that one point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other input from the public?
Uh, do we, are we allowed to respond?
Hold on. Seeing none, close up the public input portion.
Do you have to second that, or?
No.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. We are trying to ameliorate the site, trying to, um, spend some money to beautify the location. There's landscaping that's going to be out along Echo Street. And, uh, the timber rail fence that is going to be included is part of the proposed, is actually for safety, for the well-being of pedestrians. It's to deny access into the street. And, uh, I do want to point out, there's, uh, screenage along the south property line. There's a large row of trees existing, um, on the south property line, as well as at the rear corner of the site, and there's a fence also too at the, uh, west property line that runs for approximately 80 feet of the property line. And that's it.
Any other input from the board?
Can I add to that, please? Those trees and things and the bushes are mine, and I'm the one who up keeps them, and I'm the one who's...
You have to, the public input portion is closed and...
Are they putting a fence up between my property?
Fence got on the property.
What?
Fence has to be on the property.
Right.
The fence would have to be, if, if a fence is going to be required or it's gonna be put up per, per the code, it certainly couldn't be put on anyone's property but on the owner's property.
It shows the trees off the property.
Any other input from the board?
I would like to say something. Mr. Chairman, if, with, what Mr. Goldblatt brought up is true about recyclable materials, clearly oil is recyclable. So wouldn't that be included in that particular code? If that is in fact true? This is a matter of question. Larry, I, you know...
What is the question specifically?
Mr. Goldblatt brought up the point about our code relative to recyclable materials.
Mm-hmm.
So we would consider oil to be recyclable, wouldn't we?
Yes.
So how would that be reflected within the code? And again, I would base that back to perhaps what Mr. Goder said, or recommended, ask, excuse me.
I would have to do research on the code, and it would probably get into the, possibly into the fire code, fuel oil code.
into the fire code, fuel oil code.
The other question I would have, Mr. Chairman, is, I certainly feel for a neighbor who is obtaining, for whatever reason, debris onto their own property. Is there a way that we might suggest to the applicant that we can avoid or preclude that debris?
I mean, I believe we can mandate a fence, can't we?
I think it's only fair, I mean...
So to build on that, is the fence, is there gonna be a fence on the south side of the property?
No, there's no fence intended for the south side of the property.
So that's why you're saying, can we mandate one?
Yes. Yes. And if we did, Mr. Chairman, would that be a zoning board issue? For, given the size of the fence, et cetera?
I believe there's codes that would be involved in that. If they're varying from the code that would, what be allowed, then there would be a ZBA type of matter. But if they're putting in a fence that is compliant with the code, there wouldn't be anything that we would...
I just wanted to bring that point up, just in the event that they would consider putting in a...
My expectation is that one of the conditions of your approval will be that the applicant obtain all of the zoning board approvals that are required. If you therefore require a particular fence on the south side of the property, and that, that fence requires zoning board approval, then you could just bundle that into the condition of zoning board approval.
Okay. From the back property corner, where you see the pipe symbol, to the front setback of Mrs. Waters' house is about 123 feet. And if that was a four foot high, board on board, or dog eared, that going down her side property line, that four feet would be an acceptable height. And what I heard tonight was the blowing of trash, which would obviously then be stopped by, no matter how high the fence is, whether it's four feet or six feet. She would be able to put a six foot high fence up on her property. I'm not suggesting that, but she would be able to put up by our code to her back corner, and then it would have to drop to four feet along the side of the house, and it could not project further than the front of the house. So that's why I'm suggesting that if the board required a fence, it would be the 123 feet from back corner to front setback, which goes beyond the fuel, the convenience area, but it would be a four foot high fence. Otherwise, you're getting a six foot fence where we really don't want one. Does that make sense?
It does, Larry. Where are you seeing the 100, where does the 123 feet end?
It ends at, at her, the front of her house. So it's about halfway down that row, halfway to two thirds of the way down the row of bushes that he, she has.
Okay.
So Larry, are you suggesting that a four foot fence would be more appropriate than a six foot fence? Is that what I'm hearing? You could bring a six foot fence up to the front of her house.
Up to the back of her house.
Up to the back of her house.
And then you would have to drop it to a four foot unless you got a zoning board variance.
Okay.
And if, if the issue is really blowing trash, the blowing trash is gonna be stopped just as well with a four foot fence as it will with a six foot fence.
Well, a, a four foot fence would also preclude likely trespassers doing...
Correct.
Whatever.
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone on the board? I'm drawing a blank as to what the, the, the bushes and trees look like along the, I, I can't remember their, if they're acceptable, if they're bushy, if they're... Somebody help me.
I might have a picture. But again, those are on Mrs. Waters' property.
I know they're on, on Mrs. Waters' property, but that's, that's not my point.
Let me see. It's gotta be in here with the grandchildren somewhere.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I never even noticed the house. It is, yeah, and I, I, I honestly, the, the few times that I went there since we've talked about this, I have, I just, I, I just don't recall Mrs. Waters' house. And, but when I look at this and I see the private hedge that's relatively full, regardless of whose property it is or isn't on, it certainly is a deterrent to, to stop blowing into her yard. There are businesses who open up, who make it, make it their business to clean up neighboring yards from debris that is from their own place. And I cite that as, I, I know for a fact McDonald's picks up their scraps, especially when it's ID'd as McDonald's. Just a thought.
If I, if I may speak, I spoke briefly with our applicant. There is a small break in the foliage along that south property line.
Yeah.
That area, it would seem is, you, you would be able to, it's, the, our property, the applicant's property, would be visible from the neighbors. So if the applicant proposes a fence within code along that break in the foliage, that he is proposing something that may, may, we, we wanna work with the, the planning board, with the neighbors. To address the concerns of, of any trash, any refuse, it would, it would obviously be hidden by the foliage, and so the only location left would be at this, this open space. And if we take care of that with the fence, a, a four foot fence.
How, how long do you visualize the fence to be?
Well, the fence would be, as long as it needs to be to cover that area that is visible through the property lines.
It'd be about 22 feet.
No, no, it's all behind the shed. So they're talking here?
The location of the open space is in the middle of the south property line.
Yeah, I know. Is it, is it just here? Yeah, okay.
It's right here, right? Yep. Is a section of fence acceptable?
No.
No?
I just don't, I don't see it as, I don't see it...
So we're talking 123 feet of fence?
Well, Larry's... I just don't see it being, it's just like 22 feet of fence popped up out of nowhere in the middle of the property. It has no continuity, it, it just, it, it's, I, I'd rather that you guys plug that gap with, even though, even if you put it on Mrs. Waters' property and she okay's it, that you went ahead and put some compatible shrubbery in there. The privet's there. I, you know, I don't know, I'm a little confused.
I would not be amenable to that, Mike, and here's the reason why. Because then somebody's gonna have to clean under the shrubbery at some point in time, and most likely that would, or could fall, I shouldn't say most likely, but could fall to the neighbor. I would wanna see a fence.
Well, she says she's doing it now.
She shouldn't have to. Really.
You know, and what's sticking with me is, it's zone commercial. It's a commercial piece of property. And convince me that, that we should be telling them that we require a fence to, to screen it from a, from a residential property adjoining. I'm not sure, I'm not sure I buy that. I mean, it would be a wonderful thing to do, but I'm not sure that that's something that we can, that I can comfortably mandate of the applicant.
I think it's a great separation between the commercial property and a residential property.
Agreed.
And I think if, if we can support both with the fence, maintain the residential character of a person's home, et cetera, as well as, let's face it, if the, the trash debris, whatever it is, is against the fence, it's easier to clean.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not, not disputing any of that. I, I guess what I'm looking at is an overall picture is, you know, this, this property has been, well, let me just say it bluntly, this property's been kind of an eyesore for many, many years, and, and any, any improvement is, is gonna be greatly appreciated. And I don't think that I wanna be, I applaud the applicant for, for making these improvements, and I don't wanna put any undue hardship on him at the same time.
I, I mean, there might be some middle ground here too, Greg, where we, or, and Ray, where we, you start at about, about level with the back of the building, so along the west edge of where the new building's gonna be, and then go out to the end of the hedge rows towards Culver, go out to, close to the end of the, the hedge rows, because the, that's likely where a lot of the trash is gonna be anyway. And then the, the, with the overhang of, of stuff that's there in the backside, you, it'd be more difficult to put any kind of fencing in over there.
You're, you're referring to approximately 123 feet that Larry was earlier referencing?
I think Jay's referring to about 44 feet, starting, starting where the tree line ends, and then running the fence forward to the front of her house.
I'm saying from the...
Yeah.
That would, that would mean that the fence would go in front of the privet.
It would go in front of part of the privet, yes.
Jay, are you saying from the end of the privet, the west side, going, going west?
Yeah, from the, from the west, from the west edge of the, the, the back edge of the proposed building, up to the end of the bushes, heading east.
He's saying plug up the hole.
It's not just the hole, but it's all the way out to the, when you're talking 22 feet, it's, I'm not talking from one end of the building to the other, I'm talking about one end of the building, almost all the way to the end of the road, all the way to the road.
Jay, that property line's 154 feet long. Can you make an analogy about how many approximate feet you're talking about? Are you talking 20, 40, 50?
On the, on the drawing, it says 53.3 feet to the proposed building, from Culver Road to the edge of the proposed building.
Yep.
And then you go, you go the, and then you go the length of the building.
20 feet, 25 feet. 78 feet, basically.
Jay's talking about 64 feet from the, the end of the tree line out to the end of the privet.
Yes. That's about, that sounds right.
I mean, we can suggest that the applicant come back with a proposal for screening that area. We don't have to...
I could agree with that, Jay. I think that's fair.
I mean, 64 feet is eight fence sections.
Yeah. You're, you're making, it sounds, again, like you are trying, trying to come, come to grips with a condition that you, that you would make with regard to the application. If you wanna see that condition further laid out in a plan, then the recommendation would be to table the matter and the request that the plan be submitted, with maybe some alternatives regarding fencing. In the interim, maybe Mrs. Waters could be consulted by the applicant, making reasonable sense.
Well, if the applicant's amenable to doing what we just talked about, is that, is that enough for...
Would they entertain 64 linear feet of fencing from the end of the...
So if, from approximately halfway through up to the front, front property line?
Whatever the front setback is.
Yeah, yes.
They would be amenable to do that now, or would you prefer? You would be amenable to do that now?
Oh, not like, right now.
No, no, I mean, but to, to make that a condition.
Yes, we would be amenable to that, the approval, a condition, conditional approval.
48 inch high solid wood fence plus or minus 64 linear feet from front setback to end of hedgerow.
You can put, lining up approximately with the western edge of the, where the new proposed building's gonna be?
Yeah.
Is that, that, so that's going to the end of the property line?
No. The setback, whatever the setback is.
How much is the setback? How much is the setback?
On the front?
30 feet. 30 feet?
What?
I believe it's three feet.
Three feet.
Three feet?
On the property line.
Three feet.
Well...
Might be a little longer than 64 feet then.
If it's three feet, then I'm concerned with line of sight. On a busy road.
The property line though is...
Property line's here, the curb is there.
Yeah, approximately 20 feet to the face of the curb.
Enough time, enough...
So what's all this?
Can't be built on the right way.
Right, right.
Correct.
This is all the right away.
So it's got 80 linear feet.
It's what?
80.
Eight zero?
Yeah.
So instead of 64, it's 80.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, good.
Anything else?
Is this, this is an unlisted action?
Yes. Are we ready to go then, or?
Wind it up.
What's it?
Wind it up. Mr. Chairman, in the matter of PB 1309-2, with respect to Seeker, I move this is an unlisted action, negative declaration.
Why do I show my hand?
Somebody's gotta second it first.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Aye. Abstain.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move in regards to PB 1309-2, upon the matter of request by Passer Row Associates, asking, acting as an agent for an upsetting, forgive me if I mispronounced your name, sir, I apologize, for preliminary and final site plan approval to reconstruct the existing cashier's booth with a 20 by 25 new cashier's booth with site-related improvements on premises 2417 Culver Road in a C commercial district with condition that there be a corral around the rear shed for garbage?
Yep.
And the fencing, as you had mentioned before, Mr. Chairman, with 70...
And ZBA approval.
And pending ZBA approval, yes.
Could I also suggest?
Yes, sir.
With regard to the storage of the, the barrels, that that be subject to fire marshal approval as well.
Okay, yes, yes. I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ray, you're gonna put in the motion, the, what kind of fencing to have in the corral, and what kinda...
I believe, I believe, Jay, that, Mr. Chairman, you put down...
I put down, my notes were that with solid wood fence and gate, and the 48 inch high solid wood fence.
Yes, that's what I would like.
And then the corral's gonna be a...
My notes, when we were talking about it, were five foot by eight foot dumpster enclosure, in quotes, for refuse and drums with solid wood fence and gate.
And did the, there would be a concrete pad, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Under that enclosure?
Well, it would be, I believe Greg suggested that we have a concrete base for the, for the shed as well.
Right, that, I'm sorry, Jay, that's what, yeah, for that hole, that particular area.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain. Abstain.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you for investing in Rondacoit.
Michelle, if you'd like to introduce the next case?
Next item on the agenda is case number PB 1309-1. Upon the matter of request by APD Engineering and Architects, acting as agent for Aldi Incorporated for preliminary and final site plan approval to construct a plus or minus 16,852-square-foot Aldi store and a plus or minus 5,017-square-foot retail store with parking, utilities, lighting, and landscape improvements on premises 2194 Hudson Avenue in a mixed-use commercial district and an R5 residential district.
Good evening. My name is Steve Kleason. I'm the president of APD. I also have with myself tonight is Chris Cambar. And we also have a representative from Aldi, Lou Kibbling. And what we're gonna do, if the board doesn't mind, we'd ask that you come out here to the front row. We have a PowerPoint that we'd like to use for a presentation. Your IT people were nice enough to get this set up for us. And then that way, I think it would be easy enough for the entire audience to see it. And hopefully, we can answer some of the questions that might be asked later during the presentation by going through and giving a kind of an overview of the entire project. So if it's, you know, whatever time you want to get started, that's up to you. But that's how we have a... Okay. And I guess I ask if you guys don't mind lowering that screen over there.
Well, we can see fine over here if you want to just sit. I'll sit right over here.
Whoever wants to sit down there, Ken, that's okay.
Oh, I guess I can't.
Oh, you're gonna be on this one, not on that one?
That one, okay. Then I can't see. I can see very easily. I know, there's a... I don't think that's gonna work. I'll take it this way, okay? Oh, okay.
On or off?
Good evening. My name is Chris Cambar. I'm with APD Engineering and Architecture, as Steve pointed out. Tonight, we're gonna be going through the property at 2194. Actually, there's several addresses, 2190, 2194, and 2196, I believe. We're gonna go through our project overview, site layout and zoning. We're gonna go through the plans a little bit, talk about utilities and grading and stormwater landscaping, a little bit about the architectural design and traffic impacts. The property, as I was mentioning, is located in this area. It goes all the way back to here. It is across from a large strip center plaza across the street. I believe that's anchored by Wegmans. It is just south of Titus Ave.
Oops, sorry.
And just north... Just north of Drake. It will share a common intersection at a signalized area here along Hudson Avenue with the plaza across the street. The proposed building that we're proposing tonight is the Aldi and a 5,000-square-foot building just adjacent to that. There is a future development that is potential to this project. It is not being built at this time, but there is a retail B building here that's about 4,100 square feet. And then the parcel that would be on the other side of the main access road is about just over 2,000 square feet. The property in the back is being retained by the current owner. And that would, is currently zoned R5 residential. Our current zoning in our front parcel here is MUC or Mixed Use Commercial. It's a little bit larger blow-up of the property, so you can see in a little bit more detail of what we're proposing. This is the intersection that we're proposing to connect with. We also have access that we are proposing to the north. The intersections and the access points are going to be reviewed by Monroe County Department of Transportation. We are currently under review with them, and we are going to be addressing their comments as well. Our road is proposed to go all the way back into the residential property and be left for future use for that property owner. The majority of our parking is in between both our proposed buildings and also future buildings. We have access that comes into the site for pedestrians as well. Here is the main connection for the pedestrians off of Hudson. We're also proposing to work with the neighboring property owner to the north to create a sidewalk connection there as well as the driveway connection. Once you come in off the main access point, you'll be able to go north to the Aldi building or south to this retail building if and when it does get built. A little bit about the mixed-use commercial zoning. These are the goals, as the code dictates, from that zoning. To create aesthetically pleasing public realm of streets and sidewalks, building facades to decorate and enlarge sidewalks, architectural street lighting and signage enhanced by trees, plazas, parks, natural and recreational areas. The unique part of this property is it does have quite a bit of that built into it already with the R5 zoning in the back, the MUC zoning in the front. It has a creek that runs through it. Steve, you can back up one picture. It has a tributary that goes out to Rondacoit Bay. It flows under from the Wegmans across the street, that plaza, and it flows down through here. This area is basically a ravine, and it drops off quite a distance to get to the bottom of that ravine. We're not proposing to go into that steep slope or affect that creek in any way, shape, or form. But as I was pointing out, the mixed-use zoning in the front, the residential zoning in the back, the potential for office space, retail space, and the different likes of commercial businesses, you know, in this area and residential in the back and the creek along there allows for a very unique piece of property to be developed. To move on with a couple more of these points, to blend in with some of the civic uses, we feel that this project and this property fits in very well with this area and very well with the character of the neighborhood.
This is without the full build-out.
This is what shows the pedestrian accesses that I was talking about. And it shows you to and from the buildings and how you can access along here in this corridor to get from, you know, the Aldi building back to this retail building. This will show you the open space views from Hudson Avenue. You know, as you're driving by, you'll be able to see, you know, across the space to the green space along the sides and in the back. Little bit talking about the zoning requirements and the front setback and the frontage requirements. The front setback in the code talks about, you know, lining up the front of the building with what is currently out there or the mean or average of the existing buildings that are already along Hudson Avenue. We feel that we've done that with our location of our building setback at this point. This area right here that you see is what the building would actually look like if we rotated it 90 degrees and did most of the frontage on Hudson Avenue. And what that does is it shows you that, you know, as you're looking across, it blocks most of the property. And you'd still be able to get the road in here, and you'd be able to put amenities in the back of the parking lot. But it does necessarily... It cuts that off and ruins the center feel and look of the project. So for that reason, we're going to be asking for a variance. The variance prior to the retail B, the 4,100-square-foot building being built just to the south or just to the north of that proposed access drive, just to the south of the Aldi across their parking lot. The variance we'd be requesting is 36%. That variance would further get reduced once retail B is built, if it was built to the dimensions that we are proposing. And that would be further reduced to 22%. This shows our site plan. It shows the Aldi building, the proposed retail, what's currently being built as part of this particular project. It shows a large green space here. It shows the roadway that would come in from Hudson Avenue. It shows our parking areas here and here, landscaping, sidewalks, more landscaping. Our loading dock is located at the back of the building. We like to keep the loading dock located in the back and the access to that located in the back and away from pedestrians and away from vehicular traffic to keep the conflicts to a minimum. As well, that loading dock is recessed four and a half feet. And within that recess, you will find our dumpster. And in that loading area, you'll find our dumpster. On the outside of that loading dock, there's a retaining wall that runs along there. It runs at grade along the top, and then it slopes down as you get closer to the face of the loading dock wall itself. This is our grading and drainage plan. Our proposal here will show that there are three significant water quality areas here, here and here, that would be most likely bio-retention to help clean the water and filter the water before it flows back to our stormwater facility here, which would have more plantings in it to filter the water and to screen out any pollutants. Once the water is screened and those pollutants are filtered out, the water would then overflow and it would go into the soil. This area has a lot of natural sands that are good for infiltration. And we do have some initial feedback and numbers back from our geotechnical engineer that says that we are able to meet the New York State DEC's requirements and infiltrate stormwater at this project. And we will have... We're not proposing at this time to overflow or directly connect any water to the creek or the slope along the creek. This is our utility plan. Currently, all the utilities are serviced along the Hudson Avenue corridor. There's gas, electric, telephone, sanitary, water, all along this corridor. The water actually is out in Hudson Avenue. We would have to, if there's no stubs found... Our current survey doesn't show any stubs coming into the existing site. What we would have to do is come out into the road and connect to that water main. Everything else, the electric would be overhead to a pole, then underground to a transformer and then connected to the building. The water would be underground. That would connect back here to the building. Gas, electric, and telephone would run the same way. The sanitary comes in across the road, is already stubbed there. We would add a manhole and connect the Aldi building plus the retail building in the back. We have a couple of light fixtures here. Those are three light fixtures along the main center of the parking lot and then two up in the front of the parking lot casted towards the building.
It's a landscape plan.
Sorry. And this is our landscaping plan. We have street trees along the front, trees around our pylon sign. We have an island here with landscaping. We put in a large landscape rock, a tree, and several bushes. We have landscaping along the front of the building as well. And then further landscaping in the back here. And we've also put up coniferous trees, pine... Actually, I believe we're calling out Colorado spruce along this section here to both shield the stormwater pond from the existing residences to the north and as well to the residences to the east. This is a blow-up of the intersection of where the sidewalk comes in off of Hudson Avenue and then T's both going to the Aldi and then further down to the retail A as well as over to the potential retail B. This shows landscaping in here and how, you know, the green space that's gonna be along the front of the property as well. These are the building elevations. This is the elevation that faces the R5 residential to the rear of the property. This is the elevation that faces the north or the existing apartment buildings to the north. This is the main view or portion of it that you would see from Hudson Avenue as you were driving south. You would catch the corner of this building. We added windows per the planning board's requirement or recommendations. We've added windows along that and dressed up the facade a little bit more than was originally proposed. As well as along this view here, you can see this elevation is what would face Hudson Avenue. We've added additional windows on the northern side of the building there. And you can see this is our cart enclosure wall. There is one on both sides of the building to help screen those. And our entrance would be here. And this is the Aldi canopy with signage. And along the bottom, this is what would face the rest of the center or the retail B. And this is the retail that is proposed in the back. This is the internal floor plan. It shows the layout internally to the Aldi. The retail A, there is no layout at this time. There is no tenant currently proposed for that use. It shows the loading dock, and it shows the front entrance to the building. This also shows the demising wall that would separate the two buildings. This would be one separate building, and this would be another separate building. There's no entry points between the two buildings. Above and beyond that, this is the area behind the building that we developed in order to place this retail B building between the Aldi and the loading dock. One, we felt it was safer to keep the loading dock behind pedestrians, behind vehicles to minimize the conflicts between the two as well as keep it away from the main center and the main feel of the center overall as the shared parking and the buildings work together. As part of this project and as part of the zoning code, we're allowed to build a building 8,000 square feet. And if we provide incentives, we can add additional square footage to the building by providing public amenities to the town for the public's sake. As part of those improvements, we're going to be adding the main driveway that goes from Hudson Avenue back to the residential and dedicating that portion of property to the town as well as dedicating the portion of property that would be south of that road in between the road and the residences to the south. That property would be owned and maintained by the town and would be controlled by the town essentially. It would no longer be... You know, it'd be up to them what that property was used for. As part of those incentives, we run our calculations, and they're part of our engineer's report. And we can see that when we tally up all the incentives that we proposed, it's almost twice the amount of credits required as part of the project to get our building up to that 15,000-square-foot amount. Now, since we separated the two buildings... Now, since we separated the two buildings and we elongated that corridor behind the Aldi building to separate our loading dock and keep it behind the pedestrian ways and the vehicular ways, we're going to be seeking a variance for that 1,600 plus or minus square feet that puts us up over the 15,000 square foot allowed. The traffic improvements that we're going to be proposing to Hudson Avenue are minimal. This road and this intersection was set up at one point in time with, with the intent that this property would be developed commercial and that a fourth leg to this existing three leg intersection would be created. As also, in addition to adding that fourth leg to the intersection, we will be adding a left turn lane on Hudson Avenue as you go from north to south and turn into the proposed We've been working with SRF and Associates who is helping us with our traffic study and traffic analysis. They originally did a trip generation study for us to identify how much additional traffic we're going to be adding to the corridor based on the Aldi and the proposed retail, as well as a separate study to show how much we're going to be adding when you put in retail B, the additional retail C, and then the residential to the rear of the property. And what they found was for the Aldi and the additional building, you've got about 171 trips generated in the Friday peak and about 207 on the Saturday peak. Another key point is that the traffic along Hudson Avenue in that corridor, there was a study done in 1995 where about 13,881 vehicles per day were tallied or projected. In 2009, the counts were performed again on that same corridor and they came up with 12,728. We did another trip, we did another traffic count this past week on Saturday, and those trips fell further to 11,300. So the vehicles in this area and the trips generated has been steadily declining since One could make the argument that that additional traffic that we're proposing would not actually add any additional trips to this intersection. We are further evaluating that and coming up with a traffic impact study to conclude, to help us with those conclusions and make sure that we're on the right track and that if there is any mitigation that's required, that we identify it and that we handle it. I'm going to turn it over to Steve and let him sum this up for us. Thank you.
Well, there's some points that I want to kind of highlight, and I think it's important to go back to a couple of the diagrams here. You know, I know there's a lot of people that are probably wondering how this is going to impact them, and I don't blame you, especially if you're a neighbor. I mean, there's got to be a lot of questions in your mind. What we're trying to do here is really try to give you an opportunity to understand what we've put into this and where we're going. Again, if you look at the zoning and the mixed use, it really talks about framing the development with the buildings. And yes, it does have a criteria of facing the road, but it also uses the term framing. What we've tried to do here is to look at the pedestrian access, and I think the first slide probably gave that a lot better, but, and we could go back to that if you wish, but if you look at this corridor on Hudson, it is pretty much a very large plaza on this side that is far back from the road. There is not a lot of frontage development along here. So we weren't going to really fit into a frontage along here and actually complement something along there. So what we tried to look at was complementing this development by making its own little like community, and that falls in line with what the zoning is trying to do. Again, by us creating a center entrance by the pedestrians, what we're trying to do is get them to come into here. We've oversized this landscape area and we were going to work with the board further to see if there's any amenities really required, but the idea is to bring them into here and let them flow to the different uses. So, I mean, if we look at what you're trying to do in a center, it's not a single place you go to visit. You're going there for a lot of different reasons. You're going here, maybe one person's going to the Aldi, maybe someone else is going to this other retail establishment, and maybe somebody else is coming over here. I know if it was my kids and that happens to be the video store or the games are going there and I'm going shopping, but all in all, it's a place where different people go different places. And then there might be someone else that's just out here enjoying sitting on this rock and looking at the open space. Now, if we're looking at the open space, this is created here, this is all being dedicated to the town. Now, we've had conversations with the town with the understanding that there has been some flooding concerns, and I think the idea is, is as they can go forward and they look at the additional property here, there are some opportunities to possibly create some improvements by the town and maybe help some of that downstream. But what we're doing is to keep all of our stormwater out of that stream. And everybody kind of goes, whoa, okay, how are you going to do that? With the sandy soils, I don't know if anybody's gone to the beach before, but you see that water wash up in those big huge waves and it disappears. Well, that's your sand. And what we're going to do is pre-treat that water to remove the pollutants and then allow that sand and the water to go down into that soils. Because we have detention facilities, we don't have to put that down in a big, large lump of water really fast. We can allow it to go in slowly, again, allowing the time for us to remove those pollutants. So what we're gaining out of here is a mixed use of the potential residential in the rear, the existing residential here, the connection point here, we got a free flow between all of our different facilities here. Now, the other variance that we are going to request is there's going to be a frontage variance in this location, and this one, there is a basically big, huge easement right through here for that pipe that comes through for that stream bed right there. There's no possibility of really turning a building here for that frontage even if you wanted to because of that easement where that pipe is. So what we've done is created a smaller, thinner building in here outside of that easement, and that's why we came up with the layout that's in that location. Again, we're not reviewing that as a planning board, but we just wanted you to understand a little bit of why we kind of slivered that in over there and why that was a little bit of a different layout than you might see in a different center type layout. So I think that a lot of the points that I'm trying to drive home is that this is a unique piece of property. I know Chris spoke to that, but in not too many properties, and I got to be honest with you, I've been doing this for a very long time and without giving away my age, I'm going to tell you that it's not too many times you have the willingness of a developer to give up property, especially in a large piece of chunk like this, it's owned commercial, to a town so that they can possibly create the open space and protection of a stream bed. And there is, you know, I know that there's people that are probably, you know, somewhat opposed to what's going on or could be opposed to what's going on, but remember that there's a lot of benefit that's coming from the community, and that is the dedication of this road, the dedication of this open space. And one of the things is if this continues on and the next proposal does secure this other ones, what this dedicated road does is provide that dedicated access by the town to this additional open space. But right now, it's going to secure this open space right here. So as they continue through and hopefully create that area that would be a possibility of a stormwater, possibility of a park, possibility of a lot of different things, those are things that the town controls now, not the applicant. In most towns, what ends up costing a large sum of money is maybe, maybe it's not the land cost, but it's the process of trying to acquire land private, you know, through condemnation or another process. By us going forward and dedicating this land and making it an opportunity to start the first step to creating an open space sliver there, that's a, I think it falls well within what is kind of described as community benefits, making a community area, and that's why we kind of went through that view set of showing that not only is, you know, something that's going to be nice with nice buildings here, but also we maintain, by not putting that building here, we maintain the view of those, that nice open space in the rear. So again, there was a lot of thought that went into this. We are, you know, we're not looking for the board to make any action tonight, other than to maybe to initiate the seeker process. We're really here to hear your opinions, your thoughts. We want to hear them. We'll try to, you know, be creative as we go forward, but we didn't want you to think that this kind of came out of nowhere and that we're, you know, we're really trying to, you know, jam something down anybody's throat. We've really put a lot of thought in this. We've really taken our time to try to create something that was in the goals and incentives of what that zoning was. So with that, we'll shut down our PowerPoint and raise this up and we can turn it over to the board again.
We're going to take a quick break for 10 minutes.
Me neither.
Me neither.
Please, I'd like to reconvene.
Who we, Greg and Bernie? Greg and Ray.
I think they're out having...
You're gonna have to watch that?
No. I mean, you can refer to it. It's the same drawings that are in your package.
It's a spot?
Yes, it is. Still waiting on two planning board members to come back.
One?
One planning board member to come back. Now I'm waiting for the town attorney to come back.
Not that I'm supposed to notice those things.
As soon as everyone sits down, I'm gonna have Larry give a little introduction into what we're trying to do and where we are currently at. Larry?
Okay. Tonight, what the board is for people in the board, people in the audience and people out in TV land watching on cable. The board will be declaring its intent to be lead agent under Seeker. This is an unlisted action. And the applicant has elected to submit the long form, which is generally used for type one actions. And we have elected to go to a coordinated review process. I handed out the Seeker flow chart for the board. So under the coordinated review, we've identified the involved agencies. And one of those involved agencies is Mono County DOT because of the intersection. And I delivered a letter along with part one of the Seeker long form to Terry Rice, Director of Transportation, Mono County DOT, Friday that was stamped in, logged in at the county, gone on Main Street. And I will also be sending letters to Supervisor DiRizio for the Aronacoid Town Board because one of the other actions is the dedication of the town of the road. So that'll be the identical process that was used for I squared back in February of 2012. And I will be delivering a letter to the zoning board because they will be the ones ruling on the variance. And I doubt either of those two other boards will want to do the planning board's job. And it was also then recommended that we send this down to DEC because they probably aren't an involved agency, but it can't hurt. And they did respond on the library project. The other thing is, so I handed out a copy of the section of the law that deals with 617.6, Initial Review of Actions and Establishing Lead Agency. And that's there for reference as we go through this, basically declaring your intent. So we'll need a motion and a second and approval to do that tonight. Until we get response from those other agencies, the board cannot declare itself the lead agent. They then cannot close Seeker and they cannot grant any preliminary and final approvals. I've recommended to the chairman that your workshop meeting on the fourteenth be a working meeting similar to what we did for I squared, similar to what we did for the Titus Tavern. So that if we do have response from the other involved agencies, that you can then declare yourself lead agency. And you can address the Seeker negative declaration or positive declaration as you so choose. I also handed out right at the beginning of the evening, the engineer's report that was submitted by Aldi's that has all kinds of information in there. And I also handed out another document that starts with project details in about four paragraphs. Pat Meredith submitted today to the Stormwater Coalition, a grant application for, I believe, $150,000. And in that document, this detention facility, online stream detention facility is number seven listed in the town of Aronacoid Townwide Drainage Study from January 2005. And so we had this discussion with the Aldis and the developer. That process is already moving forward. And I sincerely hope that we get the grant. So that would also be, any work that the town did in the stream would be subject to an Article 15 stream permit from New York State DEC. So I've already contacted DEC so that we can have a meeting with them to see where this has been done and other places. One of them is Kingsbend Park in the town of Pittsford. And what their wildlife biologists like and what they don't like. So with that, I'll turn it over to the board.
Yeah, and maybe just to provide some little supplements to what Larry said. My name's Ed Primo with Harder Seacrest. I've been asked by the town to get involved in this process, particularly from the Seeker viewpoint. This is what looks to us preliminarily as a unlisted action, which would typically be a short form. But we've talked to the applicant and they've submitted part one of a long form environmental assessment form, which will be sent out to the agencies and will, I think, be useful to the board in reviewing the project. We'll also be doing a process at one of the workshop meetings or working sessions where we'll then take that form, which kind of divides up the Seeker process or the environmental review process into a series of 20 or so areas. And literally be going through each of the 20 areas and hopefully reviewing a draft part two, it's called, where you kind of discuss each of the areas, why you think there may or may not be a impact and then identify whether, you know, there's significant impacts, whether they're large, and then go on from the process from there. I think another important part of this project has been, as Larry mentioned, the referral to county DOT. We certainly want to get their input. As you probably saw from the presentation, what the applicant has done is provided some conceptual information on traffic. So you can kind of see what would be the traffic from a full build out of what they anticipated. So kind of we can do a seeker on that sort of issue. But the main process tonight would be for the board. When it's time for you to take action, to say that you do in fact want to be lead agency and make sure before you take any action, we have all the other involved agencies sign off on that process. The other issue that I've discussed with Larry is I think there's some code interpretations we want to make sure are done and are clear about the number of buildings, the kind of the incentives that's been offered, at least some calculation to check on that. Make sure we checked on the size of the variances. Because we're basically talking about two major variances with respect to this as it's been proposed. So those are kind of the steps. This is really the kind of the beginning of the process that we're looking at tonight. I'd be happy to get any questions from the board, just about the process that I've discussed.
I have a question. Why is it that the applicant would want to go full form as opposed to short form? Something doesn't smell right to me.
Yeah, I think the reason why we had suggested the full form is actually to assist the board because it does identify more areas to go through and provides you with more information. That was actually a request we made to them and I guess he decided not to say no to me. I know.
So if you look at the handouts we got, which one is this?
That is the Seeker from DEC website. And that's just a section pertinent to tonight's business.
But to answer your question, on the second page, number three, it says for unlisted actions, the short form must be used. However, an agency may instead use the full EAF for unlisted actions if the short EAF would not provide the lead agency with sufficient information. It's not anything smelly. It's just a part of the process.
And I think that was kind of the judgment. I mean, we acknowledge that it's a project of interest and it does provide us with more information. As I say, if you use the short form, they kind of take the same questions, but they put them into seven questions. So you end up with little spaces in the long form, kind of gives you more information and breaks it out.
So it's not out of order to do it that way?
No, it's not out of order. And the other thing, I mean, just to talk about it, it's an unlisted action, but we've recommended to the board that you do a coordinated review. You don't have to do a coordinated review in an unlisted action, but I usually think it's pretty helpful if you have the other agencies involved, get their sign off and get their input. So it would certainly be our recommendation.
And just to add to that, I squared was an unlisted action. And I squared, their engineer elected to submit the long form again because of the complexity of the project. So it's not the first time that that's been done because the DEC is actually in the process of revising it. And the current short form that's, you know, one, basically two-sided is going to turn into about a four or five page document. It'll be much more useful for these projects that are somewhat, somewhat big, but not supersized.
So, Mr. Chairman, were you involved in this decision at all?
Yeah. I was consulted.
I like the idea of the long form. It's a complicated piece of property. There certainly is an awful lot of nature that we want to keep. I think the more information we have coming in, I think the more intelligent.
Is your concern that it's, you feel that it's overkill?
I almost finished.
No.
Greg? Go ahead.
He wasn't finished.
Oh.
I thought you paused.
The thought, weren't I mauld?
Sorry. Thought you paused.
That's okay. It was a comma.
Is your concern that it? No, no, I don't, and I don't have any problem using the long form, but what strikes me as curious is if we're asking to be designated lead agency here, but yet the lead agency wasn't the one involved, at least we weren't involved in asking for the long form. That's why I asked if you had been consulted about this.
Well, I...
We are the planning board.
Yeah, I mean, I, we, I've worked with the staff on it and we had made the recommendation. So I guess I thought it was fine to do it. It was my recommendation. You know, it's...
I guess the original submittal was a short form.
The original submittal was a short form. We said a full would be better. I don't think the applicant had much problem when we made that request to. My goal is to try to give the planning board as much information as we can so you can make the best decision you can make.
I mean, Larry and I have been in constant, and the attorney have been in constant contact about this project over the last two weeks since, you know, not constant, but periodic, I should say.
Just a couple of things. I mean, I originally said, Ed, I've got the short form and I'm planning on doing a part two from the long form. And he said, why don't you just ask them to do the part one from the long form. And some of the information that goes, that shows up on a long form is the type of soils and the tributary. And by the way, this is a tributary directly to Lake Ontario. It has nothing to do with Aronacoid Bay. So it goes directly past, through Flo Bianchi's pond and then north to Lake Ontario. Also, it talks about how much water is being used on a daily basis. It talks about traffic. So all those things don't show up on a short form. And so there's some, there's some stuff that's, you know, beyond what we need to know, but there's some other good little tidbits that kind of force that information out that comes out on the long part one.
Okay. Any other questions of the attorney or the process?
You know, it might be, it might be good to have a clearer understanding for everyone as well as people watching or whatever.
Well, that was, I was gonna summarize as soon as we were done with any questions with the attorney.
Type one and what the differences between a type one and an unlisted action and the process involved in each.
Sure. Well, I could do that now if you want.
Sure, why not?
A type one action is specific actions that have been identified in the DEC regulations. And those are the actions that the DEC has determined are more likely to require an environmental impact statement. They're those projects that are more likely to have what are called large significant adverse impacts. It doesn't mean that you have to do an environmental impact study for each one that's designated type one. And in fact, there's lots of times there's type one actions and you are able to show that the project as proposed won't have a significant impact. Unlisted actions are those actions that are not type one or type two. Okay, so what do I mean about that? Well, type two are actions which have been designated as not having a significant environmental impact. So you don't have to do a seeker at all. You know, the typical ones that you might deal with are, you know, lot line variances or things like that for residential projects. So in looking through the list, and Larry and I had certainly sat down, looked at it, our preliminary classification was unlisted. We went through the type one list and we didn't see anything about this proposal that triggered a type one standard. That being said, what we have said though is give us the same sort of information you would give us for a type one. And we would like to do a coordinated review with all the other agencies as you would with the type one.
Right.
So that's kind of the way we're doing it. It doesn't appear anything triggers that type one standard. If it did, what would you do? Well, you'd say, give me a full EAF. And you would say, let's do a coordinated review. And we have the option as the lead agency, assuming we ultimately become the lead agency, to decide to do that anyways.
Right. And if you don't mind, I'll just roll through the 11 checkpoints so that people can see how far this, how much smaller this is than a typical type one action. The adoption of a municipal land use plan, no. Affecting 25 or more acres, no. The whole site's only eight acres, including the R5. Granting a zoning change that meets or exceeds a threshold, no zone change here. Transfer of more than 100 acres, no. Construction of new residential units, in our case, population less than 150,000. We are 52,000, 250 units, so definitely doesn't apply. Expansion of existing non-residential facilities by more than 50%, that would really kind of deal with like a Walmart expansion. Physical alteration of 10 acres, use of over 2 million gallons per day of water, parking for over 1,000 cars. Towns of less than 150,000, a facility of more than 100,000 square feet of gross floor area. And that would then structure over 100 feet in height, definitely not. Are we an ag district? Definitely not. Is there a historic building on the National or New York State Register on the site? No. There are actually none in the town at all. And then a 25% threshold if contiguous to parkland, which is not parkland. And any type one threshold established by the town, if the town had its own special list, which it doesn't. So none of those things, and I ran through these, we're remotely close to that. So as Ed said, it's an unlisted action. We've elected to do the more rigorous process of the long form and the coordinated review.
Another question for you, and Larry, you might be the one to answer this. Could you tell me or give me a list at this juncture, if applicable? Who are all the involved or concerned agencies that you have identified or will be identifying?
I just went through them. County DOT.
No, no, Aronacoid Conservation Board?
We're not dealing with any environmental protection overlay districts.
But don't we have potentially a drainage issue?
No. When, when the Conservation Board will be... Excuse me. Quiet, please. The Conservation Board, if and when the town has a project down in the stream, would be involved. And in fact, the chairman of the Conservation Board, Bob Kylie, was down in that stream on Friday with Pat Meredith and did a quick review of this project. But as Steve Cleason can tell you, they have a kind of a recharge basin that's going into the sand, which had a percolation rate of 40 inches per hour. So 40 inches of water per hour. And this is right in the stormwater, the 800-page plus stormwater manual. So the tricks that they're using for their stormwater management come right out of the manual. It's part of general permit, GP zero dash whatever, whatever, whatever. And nothing is directly, nothing is going into the stream. So the Conservation Board is not involved. They have an interest, but they're not involved.
So they wouldn't be concerned either, or either?
Well, I mean, I think...
Concerned about everything, but...
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm trying for clarification. That's all I'm asking for. Okay? Concerned, there's a difference. I'm not, no, no, there's a difference between concerned and about as well. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, the phrase is involved and interested.
I'm sorry, interested. Excuse me.
Right, right, right. So interested agencies can be agencies that you may just have a general interest and, you know, similar to the public and you can decide to send information to them and ask for their input. Involved agencies are those that actually issue some sort of permit, funding, or take a specific action. So we're trying to, I think we're trying to identify which are those that actually issues a permit really for this. So that, and some of these things are, for example, the DEC would say that the stormwater facility meets a permit. It's already issued. So they're not issuing a new permit. They're saying there's coverage.
Again, Mr. Primo, Larry, I'm just asking for the criteria that you would have utilized to address the issue. That's all I'm asking for.
Yeah.
Just for clarification.
It's a good question. I mean, another point was that as far as the water tap, as long as you follow the state and local health code and the Mono County Water Authority specifications for getting your water tap, they will come tap the main and give you what's probably going to be a four inch service that serves both domestic and and this is a fully sprinkled building. So the fact is that that is a type two ministerial action, like you coming and getting a permit for your deck. As long as you follow the process, you are going to get a permit. The county DOT is a little different because they have some design criteria review.
Right, okay. Just for everybody's purpose.
No, that's, that's a good question.
Okay. Thank you. That's all hit. Thank you.
I guess just to... I guess just a summary to our intention tonight is to get input from the public. Eventually have a motion to declare ourselves-
Tend to be lead agency.
Tend to be lead agent. And to set the ball rolling with this project by the pre-application conference. I think that's the correct term. So this is the beginning of a process that's probably going to span over the next couple of meetings or longer. And-
Mr. Chairman, before we, I know we want to get the public input.
Yes.
And I was wondering if there's one thing that's going to come up over and over again during public input. And that's, there's other things I know, but the one thing that I think is, concerns me the most anyway is the, the whole issue of drainage. And, you know, putting a bunch of blacktop someplace and having drainage to be better than it was before. And understanding that concept is kind of foreign to a lot of people. I used to live on Bellmead Road and this stream went through my backyard and it, it flooded my backyard on a, on a semi-regular basis when heavy rains came. So I understand where everybody's concerned as with respect to drainage, there's other issues obviously. But this is one of the ones that's nearest and dearest to a lot of people. So I'm wondering if the applicant can explain a little bit about the detention ponds and the, that are going to be on the, the east side of the project before we, in a little bit more detail than you did when you went through your application, your, your presentation rather. I have a microphone here too.
You need to take the microphone.
Why don't you take this microphone? Is that all right, Mr. Chairman?
You can talk real loud, but it's still on tape.
One thing, Steve, I want to say, Steve kind of mentioned that we might be putting, or you might be making all of the storm pipes perforated as well. So that there'll be opportunity for groundwater recharge as the water's moving through the pipe. And that is exactly the situation that, what's going on down at Tops, is that is the design cost that she used.
One thing you might want to address too, and I think people might perceive that the water's going to go into the pond, drain into the ground, and then drain into underground into the creek. So, you know, by charging the ground, you're in essence creating an aquifer to the creek.
Well, there, I mean, I'm not going to sit there and tell you that that water doesn't eventually make it to the creek. The thing is, is that in a storm event, when it rains, the typical flooding that occurs, occurs because of the initial flush of water that comes off the pavement. So by the time this water would normally make it to the stream, you, you've already seen that flush of immediate water go past the stream bed. So what happens is, and I think it'll help a little bit to maybe, I know you guys probably can't all see it, but then I apologize for that. But up in the front, we have a couple, what we would call like bio-retention areas. And what those are, they're oversized depressions in the ground. And on the base of them, they're basically like an organic or sand-type filter system underneath it. So that the water before can go into the ground, those impurities are removed through the vegetation takeup. As well as the organics in there allow certain materials to grow within that soil and those sands to actually take up those pollutants. So those are treated prior to actually entering the groundwater and it cleanses those. As well as any of the excess water, there's an overflow pipe that would take it back. And it would eventually come back to this larger basin where we again would retain it. And it would have, basically act as an overflow. So before it would actually even go into the soils, there'd be this filtration system on the bottom. So they would have to go through their filter, which slows down that infiltration rate. It can't go directly to it. It fills up the pond first and slows it, so it doesn't go directly to the stream. So if I can kind of make this in a, a more of a understanding, here comes a storm event. It's raining really hard outside. The water's all running to the stream. Our running, our water's going back here. So the stream starts to fill up and it's going down through the, now it eventually stops raining. Our water's still in here going down through the infiltration system or sitting in that basin. And then the stream goes down because now the rain has stopped. The stream starts to go back down. Our water's going down through the soils and eventually will go down into the groundwater. Now, depending on the groundwater flow, it could flow this way away from the stream or it could flow towards the stream. But it would come at a pace that would be pretty much, will, um, a much delayed to that than it would if it was running off. And that's what typical fear is. And what has happened in many of these areas that have developed is, and I, and I understand why this has probably become a problem. Many of these areas were developed over the years with no systems. So what you've had happen is these basins were never created. There was no system to get the water from the surface into the soils that would allow it to recharge into the ground. So what's happened is these parking lots run down, they go into typically a road drainage, you know, system that then goes right to the creek. And then it runs down and it floods immediately. So what we're doing is not allowing that to happen. We're bringing it all back to here and recharging it. And, and normally, and we'll prepare a full storm report showing that we're holding, you know, the storm events up to the 100-year storm. Is what our intent is to hold the entire events up to 100-year storm and recharge those into the ground and not send them to this, the stream bed. In actuality, if, if the town goes forward with their proposals and can secure the grants and some of the other things, on top of what we're doing to avoid any water going there, they would be creating something in this area that would help detain that water here in this existing area. So that it would go downstream at a slower pace. Now, I believe if you look at the old maps, there was a pond upstream at one time that probably absorbed some of that water. That pond's not there anymore. So that probably impacted how the stream operates. I, I'm sorry, I don't live in your community, but I can tell you, every community has these type of situations that go on. Development occurs, ponds get filled in or basins get filled in, and what happens was they, they act differently. So what we are trying to do is provide two things as a benefit to this community. One is obviously the development, but on top of that, we want to treat our water and not impact the stream. What we're trying to do is try to avoid going, anything going there. And on top of that, we are, and our portion of it, dedicating the land to the town so they can initiate what would be a long-term solution to that basin area. And I think that's really the understanding, that the long-term, I know people are shaking their heads, but I've been doing this a long time. I'm a licensed engineer in 34 states. I, I'm not doing this on short-handed. The, the problem that you have to have, and the reason why wetlands have become such a big, huge issue with the, the DEC is, those are ponding areas. Those are areas where the stormwater gets taken up and gets held during storm events. A lot of those over time have been filled in. So why you're seeing now so many areas where, you know, it's hard to impact any wetlands is because they know now that they have to protect those areas. And what we're trying to create here is an opportunity for the, the town to actually provide something similar to that in an existing facility that's available. So that's the storm area in a nutshell. The other thing I wanted to touch on that, I don't know if it was clear, two things. One is that there will be a subdivision involved with this project. There's a subdivine line here, as well as the dedications to land will normally form a subdivision as well. And the second thing is, we are actually working with the county and we will be preparing a full traffic report and submitting that to the town for their review. We did give you some information here to show that the area itself is actually decreasing the traffic. Part of that is probably because people are going to other places. Hopefully this, this center will help bring people back to this area. But what we're seeing is, is that there is a decrease in, in traffic in this, this corridor over the, since 1995. So we will prepare that traffic because what we want to do is look at the individual movements within the area to see if there's anything that, you know, may be impacted by our development. I hope that adds a little bit to it.
You, you mentioned that you're gonna, that you're gonna be dedicating some of that land to the, to the town. What about on the other side of the, where the R5 is? Is that, is that land-
That is not something that we have an option on, but we believe that we are trying to work to see if there's something that, you know, we can get the seller to consider. But I, we don't have any control over that.
All right, but just by doing your section of it, is that the grant that is, that, that went forth, does that just impact that portion of it, or is it the entire stream bed that goes down through the-
Pat's grant was for the entire stream bed, part A and, and hopefully part B.
Okay, so you're, you're, okay.
It'll, it'll, it'll take that long to get it, I'm sure.
I mean, we can only work with what we have control over at this point.
Thank you.
Any development in that R5 area where the stream is, is not, I mean, it's not like you could build a, a building over the top of the stream.
No, you, 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 you wouldn't be in there.
It'd have to be addressed when the next-
Steep slope, it's stream corridor E pod, it's steep slope E pod, so.
Just makes sense to, to, for whoever's going to develop in there to dedicate the rest of the stream to the town anyway.
The, the broker is sitting in the room and we've already had that discussion, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Since the only thing we're going to be doing tonight is, is talking about the C corp, can we get on with the public input? We've been here for two hours and everybody's getting a little restless, I think. Leave the other discussion for a, a later meeting.
I'm ready. I've been ready.
Um, I'd like to open up to the public at this point. I would ask that people try to keep their comments as brief as possible. I mean, I'm sure everyone wants to speak. If someone takes, monopolizes the time, won't give the same opportunity to someone else.
We, we do have a three-minute time limit, do we not?
We do not. We have a five-minute time limit?
No.
Yes. Sorry, just lost my train of thought. Five minutes, thank you. I would ask also people that not to be repetitive. I, we don't need to hear, I believe everyone understands that drainage, for instance, is a very extreme concern on this property, so we understand that and take that very seriously in traffic, so.
Richard Barone, 154 Alwood Drive. Having served on the planning board for 14 years, I've seen hundreds of these engineers come to this town and give a glowing report of the wonderful things they're going to do and then be disappointed later. Prime example, Winding Woods, the engineers guaranteed that the ponds and the drainage would take care of all the water. Guess what? Those people in that area still have drainage problems and overflowing. So you guys need to take a hard look, and I'll get into that in a minute. The road is the responsibility of the town. What does that mean? Perhaps Mr. Larry Heininger can respond to that. These ponds, do they get clogged up because they have particles in them and all kinds of pollutants? And how often does the town have to clean them? Does the engineer have any information on that? We have had ponds that have been problems in the past. The other thing is, you gentlemen have talked about the long form. The important thing is not what form you use. This town has used forms and has violated the seeker law in the past. You can have all kinds of quantities and the courts have ruled, it's not the quantity of stuff you have on that piece of paper, it's the hard look. And let me give you an example. There's a traffic report that was submitted to this town for a 300-person occupancy, public assembly building. The traffic report said it was only going to generate 50 cars in one hour. 300-person occupancy, 50 cars in one hour. The same as where these people were before, where they had a limit of 50 parking spaces. So as far as I'm concerned, these traffic engineers have to be looked at as a hard look. Are they based upon national formulas? No. Base it upon what's happening in this town. The other thing is if you're going to base a decision upon one day, one traffic study, I urge you not to do that. Was that a day that was unusually low? And then to say a trend, one day from one year before and one day today, is not a trend, gentlemen. I've dealt with numbers all my life. That's not a trend. I'm sorry, I disagree with this gentleman over here, and I've done numbers all my life. I would never accept that. The public should be able to comment on this application as you go forward. In other words, at some point, you're going to get more information. Don't close the hearing. As long as you're getting more information, these people should have a right to comment on that additional information. I've seen it in the past where boards in this town have closed the hearing and then you take more information from the applicant and the public never has a right to comment on it. That's wrong. So what does a hard look mean? It doesn't mean you just put things on a piece of paper and say, well, we're going to take care of it, no problem. That's not a hard look. And the courts have ruled that way. And this town has already, not this board, at least not yet, violated the environmental law twice. Including where a judge has ruled against the town. So legal advice has to be looked at very carefully. And I'll tell you one thing, take all engineer studies with a grain of salt. After 14 years on the planning board, let me tell you, they're not always right. And they're based upon formulas that don't necessarily apply to this town. So I'd like to have my questions answered. I believe under the law, the public has a right to ask questions. And the applicant has an obligation to answer those questions under this public hearing, which is basically a hearing to provide evidence and testimony. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brian Goey. I'm 405 Brookview Drive. I'm a member of the Brookview Neighborhood Association. And I want to address the board by focusing on the mixed-use commercial zoning district. And section 235 dash 30.1 says, A, purpose. The purpose of the mixed-use commercial zoning district is to create a traditional mixed-use area that can serve as a gathering place scaled to the pedestrian. Now, off the top of my head, that doesn't sound like a grocery store. Goals. There's four goals, but the most notable goal is to make the zoning district an area that is appealing to pedestrians and bicyclists and built on a scale that is conducive to pedestrian activity. So that's something that you need to look at very carefully to see if in fact this proposed use is consistent with the town code that we are legally obligated to comply with. I'd also, I'd like to just suggest that a grocery store like Aldi's, which is a fine grocery store, is not a gathering place scaled to pedestrians. This is not the prop, the right place for this project to be, to be enacted. Now, what is also most interesting is if you look at prohibited uses, section 235 dash 30.4 prohibits any use involving a building with a gross floor area, GFA, exceeding 8,000 square feet or up to 15,000 square, square feet with bonuses. So this application is really prohibited. It centers on the fact that there's this claimed bonus. But that's really a question that's up to debate and should be scrutinized very carefully as to whether in fact what the developer proposes is really a bonus. And for the town to take over somebody else's responsibility isn't necessarily a bonus. And the town would only accept such a, such a gift if it deemed it to be a bonus. So that's really something that's not clear as to whether what the developer proposes is in fact a bonus. And it, it, you know, off the top of my head, it sounds like the issue of the water flow in that, in that creek is going to become the town's problem. And I don't know how that could be construed to be a, a bonus to the town of Arandaquay. And also, I haven't heard any discussion about the impact on the people whose homes are in that apartment complex very close to the back of that store, how they're going to be impacted. And I would think that those people have a right to have a safe, quiet home and to have a loading dock within proximity of their living area would seem to be counterproductive to having that situation. To having a home that is safe, habitable, and quiet. So I think you should consider that very carefully also. And I think the most complex issue that you have to look at very carefully is the question of the water. Even though this project apparently does not address the creek in terms of the, the, the area of the parcel, anytime you put concrete in, you put asphalt, you put building materials, that water is going to be flowing someplace else. And that area where that creek is, has got steep slopes in most of it. And it's going to definitely take some of the runoff, no matter how well-intended the developer may be in terms of trying to divert the water from that project away from the creek. So I think this is a complex situation. You need to look at whether in fact it is consistent with the goals of a mixed-use commercial zoning district. This area is part of the town center, which Mr. Nolan is developing. Hard to see how the Aldi's is going to fit in with that sort of development. It does not seem pedestrian-friendly. Having some sidewalks, to me, is a kind of a smoke and mirrors type of approach. So I don't think it's just the right project for this, this parcel. And perhaps somebody else would come up with a, a different approach that would be consistent with the town's own code. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anne Burns and I live at 199 Bellhurst Drive. And I'm here speaking on behalf of the community group Helping Arandaquay Plan for Progress. I am- I am the co-chairperson. And as many know, HIP has been involved for the past sixteen years in many aspects of the Titus Cooper Hudson Mixed-Use Commercial District. We submitted some comments this last week, and I would like to read some of those for the public record. As planning board members and planning staff will recall, the I-Square pre-application review in November of 2011 was the first new construction proposal within the 2004-adopted Titus Cooper Hudson Mixed-Use Commercial District. And that required an assessment of the code incentives. We believe it is not only required, but also important, for the planning board to conduct a similar assessment with this proposal, so a pre-application review, to assure consistent application of these requirements and the incentives. Because of this, our preliminary comments are consistent with the I-Square precedent, reviewing each element of the Mixed-Use Commercial District zoning code and the associated incentives. And although we're encouraged to see Aldi's willingness to develop these parcels with multiuses and appreciate the work that it went into preparing the detailed submitted documents, HIP does not support preliminary site plan approval for the following reasons. Number one, although we're just seeing the applicant's incentive logic tonight, but at first glance, we don't think that not building on the ravine and giving it to the town of Arundic quite satisfies the intent or the actual phrasing of the civic space incentive. So we still do not believe that this qualifies for more than eight-thousand gross floor area. In any case, the town board has decision rights for that incentive, and we are not sure that there's any value in providing the town to have this. In addition, the setback requirements required by the code is not generally what's in the area. The code states that it is not to exceed the average setback of adjoining structures. The adjoining structures that you will see there are the chiropractor's office. Their setback is thirty-nine feet. The other adjoining structure is Sunset Plaza. We were not able to obtain the full setback there. We believe it's in the mid-seventy-foot range. So eighty-one feet of setback is not in keeping with the code. For these reasons, it is our opinion that this proposal requires significant rework, particularly in building size, orientation, and frontage amenities prior to consideration of preliminary or final site plan review. We do believe there are changes that could be made to satisfy these requirements, and as always, we're willing to participate in these sessions with planning staff. The preliminary seeker checklist, and this is specific to item number eight, should also be amended to read "no," as this application does not conform to existing zoning for the Mixed-Use Commercial District. Number two, conformance to the Mixed-Use Commercial Design Guidelines. Given the issues with basic code and incentive elements, along with the short window of time we have all had to respond to this application, we have not conducted a comprehensive review of the design guidelines. This is something that the planning board, you all will recall, required, and we participated in that with the I-Square proposal in February of 2012. This was another important precedent. However, we did not, we noted several preliminary concerns with this application, and we, we sent those with our attachments last week. We do appreciate the applicant's willingness to invest in Arundic quite. We're encouraged to see a national chain's willingness to cohabitate with an alternative use, something that's absolutely required for a densely developed community like ours, and something unlikely in the very recent past. We believe whatever happens on this vacant Hudson Avenue parcel will set precedent for all future development on this edge of the Mixed-Use District. So please consider things closely. It is important for this planning board to review and apply the code incentives as thoroughly as they did for the I-Square application. We encourage the applicant to reconsider their submitted site plan, attempt to stay within the defined dimensional standards and the district design guidelines for this proposal. As an aside, we were wondering if Aldi's Incorporated would consider substituting one of their Trader Joe's at this location as a way to service the upscale discount food market in the northern part of Monroe County. It appears on all scales that the Pittsburgh store has been successful this first year, and Trader Joe's could do what Staples did when they came into the Monroe County market, divided the county in half. Put one store in the north, here in Arundic quite, one in the south in Henrietta. So Arundic quite could be the northern Trader Joe's. We thank you and appreciate the opportunity to comment.
Larry McDonald, 155 Drake Drive, speaking for the Brookview Area Neighborhood Association. The neighbors of this area, the neighbors of the area in question are the members of the Brookview Area Neighborhood Association, and strongly object to the use of this property in question for the following reasons. Newbury Associates are addressing you, the planning board, in hopes that you will approve the construction of this project. They ask for permission to build a sixteen-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty-two-square-foot store, and then a five-thousand-seventeen-foot store also. But if you look at the plans, you can see that it's one building with a wall going through it. It's, it's one building. So, and that is twenty-one-thousand-eight-hundred feet. And only eight-thousand feet is allowed, fifteen-thousand if you allow for the bonuses they're talking about. So they want you to approve the construction of a building that's forbidden by the zoning laws. In addition, the addition of a hundred-car parking lot to the traffic at that part of Hudson Avenue was unimaginable. Somebody said that since 1995, traffic has not appreciably increased. I can tell you it has, and I'm sure anybody in this room can tell you it has. And there's already too much traffic on that part of Hudson Avenue, and we don't want our neighborhood turned into a West Henrietta Road. And we shouldn't have to tolerate such a condition. In addition, the homeowners of the homes on Dale Side Road, Plaza Drive, North Point Trail, and Lorraine Drive purchased property backing up to Woodlands and the stream. Now an entrepreneur expects them to settle for the noise of the round-the-clock deliveries of tractor-trailers and the smells of their trash. All in all, this is not a good plan. We, the Brookview Association, insist that you please reject this plan.
My name is Brock Powell, and I live at 36 North Point Trail. Our land abuts the land in question that's being, that may be developed. I had originally thought that I would spend a lot of the time talking about the flooding problem, and I know that you've heard a lot about this already. However, I do need to say that in the thirty-six years that I have lived here, I have experienced several floods of the stream, which you could not believe. The stream normally is a very small creek, but after a heavy rain or prolonged rain, the water comes down through there and, and it's like a small river. And it goes about two-hundred feet on each side of the stream. And one of my neighbors across the river, the stream, has said his, the water comes up to the steps of his house. It comes up fairly close to our house at North Point Trail, and it's quite alarming. And I can't believe that putting more asphalt in another parking lot in the area that's proposed would, couldn't much, make more runoff. And I, I'm not convinced that a flood basin like is proposed would really answer the question for enduring heavy rains. There's been too many times that this, this stream has flooded. I also like to point out that this is a wildlife area. We have recorded over the years we've lived there, seventy different species of birds. It's a migrating stop for birds both in the spring and the fall. And this is quite, in fact, we've made a list, and I'd like to pass this around so you can see the, the kinds of birds that come to this area. We also have animals on the land, and everybody knows there's deer in Arundic quite, but there are lots of other animals as well in this area that you wouldn't believe unless you lived along Plaza Drive or North Point Trail. We bought our house, as others in this area, because of the land, and we would be very unhappy to see further development at the other end of this property. We already experienced noise from wagmans with the vacuuming of their parking lot in the wintertime, the plows, and their trash. The trash blows west to east, and from wagmans, it blows our direction. Over the years, I've just picked up innumerable barrels of trash throughout this land. No one takes care of this stream, by the way. The thought that perhaps the town might develop some of this land, I, I can't believe that they would wanna do this. It's already wooded, it's natural, it doesn't need development to further the wildlife. But we do need control of trash, and having another grocery store in the area proposed, I think is the wrong way to go. You know, an office building could be something we would tolerate, but not another grocery store. That's basically it, and I hope that the, the town board will think carefully about this and not approve this latest notion of what to do with the land. Thank you. Pass this around.
You know what I heard, Jay? I heard there was a bald eagle in there. Just recently.
Was it on the list?
I don't know if that's what I was gonna ask.
I have to share these, I don't have that.
Go ahead. Thank you.
My name is Sandy Powell, I'm Brock's wife. I live at 36 North Point Trail. I am the past president of the Brookview Area Neighborhood Association, which represents over two-hundred families. We have been on this journey before, when Jean Mazzola was town supervisor, and that was the time that I was head of the organization, and they wanted to put their new store in our neighborhood where Par Circle now exists and the senior assisted living apartments exist across the street, Hudson Avenue, from the former Chase Pickens store. And we spent two years fighting with them, paid out a lot of money for expensive lawyers to keep them out of there. It was a totally inappropriate place to put the grocery store that would have been bordered by three of our streets, Brookview, Miller Lane, and Drake Drive. The important thing that my husband didn't mention is that none of you, and the developers, I'm sure, are in this group I'm thinking of, have ever come to our house in our land, and we invite you to do so, the next time we have a prolonged rain or a heavy rain, because you would be shocked at the amount of water that the stream turns into something like the Amazon River. Comes up the slope about two-hundred feet, very close to our house, very frightening. We've called the town so many times. They finally did something about the water as it approaches Brookview Drive at the corner of Titus. Maybe some of you are familiar with that. They finally put a better piping system under the road. But ever since Wagmans and Chase Pickens paved over that land over there, we have seen this enormous change in the water flow, which formerly the stream could handle, but it can't anymore. And this is without putting anything new in. This is already, please come and look the next time it rains. You will be shocked at what we have. And because of this constant flooding of our land, the tree roots have become so weakened that periodically one collapses over. And right now, since the last rain we had a couple of weeks ago, we have two forty-plus-foot trees that came out of the ground and crashed over the stream. We are still waiting for the town to come and take care of those trees. They have assured us that they think they're high enough over the bank, that if we do have a heavy rain before they get there, it won't add to creating a dam there. Another problem we always have, because the people that own this land we're talking about tonight never do anything to take care of it. And to say we could just leave it alone is not true. The, the litter from the plaza and fallen branches that naturally come down during the course of a year, they just go in the stream. Nobody takes care of it. And I've had the DEC come, and they've looked at it with me, and they agree that there should be, and the man that came a few years ago said there shouldn't ever be any development up at there on Culver Road, where it is zoned for it, but he said it shouldn't happen. And as far as the traffic, I was the one that was instrumental in getting the traffic lights the way they are right now. So that Chase Pickens wanted the traffic light, first there's the traffic light at Brookview and Hudson, and then they wanted a traffic light across from their store, and then Wagmans wanted a traffic light where it is today. They took no, no account of how we get in and out of our neighborhood onto Hudson Avenue. And they came and they did this traffic study that they mentioned here, and we were all stunned at the amount of traffic at that time that was coming down Hudson Avenue. And they did it over two or three weeks, all the time, around the clock, and they got a very good picture of it, and they said, "No problem, you get the traffic light, Chase Pickens doesn't." So there is support for our neighborhood. We're a border neighborhood. How our neighborhood goes, the rest of the town goes. If our property values fall because of something so inappropriate as another grocery store, the rest of you are going to feel it wherever you live in town. We should be protected, and protected by you and the other boards in town, and we hope that you will decide in our favor. Thank you very much.
Denise LaRosa, 115 Van Voris Avenue. I really like Aldi's. I shop the stores in Grease and in Webster and on Lake Avenue. Unfortunately, they're really too far away, so I don't get there as often as I would like. Aldi's has products that other stores don't have. This week, Aldi's is the only place, except for Wagmans on, on Monroe Avenue, where you can buy a pomegranate. But that's beside the point. I also like the green aspects of Aldi's. I like the fact that all the shoppers there bring their own shopping bags, reusable bags, they take care of their own carts, and Aldi's passes those savings on to all the customers, which is why we shop there. We certainly need more retail in Arundic. We certainly need more retail in Arundicote, especially since the demise of Medley Center. And I was pleased to see that this is not a standalone Aldi's, but it will be a bit of a small mall-type area with some other retail shops. I hope that they're successful in bringing that additional retail to town because right now, many of us drive out of town for many of our shopping needs. I also like to see that there may be several new tax-paying retail establishments on the tax rolls and that will increase the tax base in Arundicote. Some of the recent large developments have been tax-exempt and they don't add to the tax rolls at all. If there's one problem that Arundicote has in terms of taxes is that we have very little commercial development. I know that I speak for others who also travel outside Arundicote to Aldi's and other stores. However, it's apparent that most people didn't know about this meeting or know about the proposal, even though it's been widely communicated among, you know, the neighbors. And speaking of the neighbors, it's always difficult, I think, when the property adjoining your own property changes in some way. When we first moved to Arundicote, we lived on Lake Lee Boulevard. And our property backed up to all woods which were on Lakeshore Boulevard behind us. Many of the neighbors along that, the northern side of Lake Lee, they got together and decided that they would try to get agreement among the neighbors to purchase that property to guarantee that it would stay woods. And they would divide the cost among the neighbors. And unfortunately, we couldn't get, everybody wouldn't buy into that plan. And so it became obvious that someday that property would be developed. For our part, we planted a lot of hemlock trees. They are a visual screen and a sound screen. And eventually the property was developed. But we didn't feel like we had any right to it. We didn't own it. It was developed, you know, as it was zoned. So like, it's difficult for that to happen. But when you buy a piece of property and it has woods behind it, or a field, or a farm, or whatever it is, there's no guarantee that it will stay that way unless you purchase that, you get together with your neighbors and purchase that property or a piece of that property. And that's the only way you can guarantee that your, that the adjacent property will remain the same. Thank you.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Benjamin Conway, I live at 16 Plaza Drive. My property does back up. As I look at this drawing up here, I can just imagine what it's going to look like once the leaves fall. I just moved here, and so I kind of give you a new residents' perspective. This pulled me, this green area back here pulled me to Arundicote. Previously, I've lived places like Oswego, Skinny Atlas Lake, Lake Plaza, which I only wish that you gentlemen had the purview that the Adirondack Park Agency has over the development in that town. But unfortunately, you can't always have that. There was a lot of mention tonight about traffic and past traffic reports. I, when I drive through Arundicote, I see a whole lot happening. And I'm very excited for most of it. But these traffic reports are based on traffic previous. Now, we have I Square happening. I feel that that is another thing that pulled me to the area. One thing in common with all the towns I previously mentioned was a nice village seat downtown area, pedestrian-friendly, as the previous gentleman mentioned, and keeping with the mixed, the uses for these mixed-use properties. Additionally, having sat back, like the previous gentleman said, there is so much wildlife back there. I would love to see the environmental impact assessment. I do have a background in environmental engineering and ecology. And if that is done, I'd like to see a biological survey done if that is possible. Also, to add on to the paving area, what that would do is that would add to flashiness of the stream. So you would get, it would become more surge, even if that treatment, that treatment well was put in with perforated pipes. It's going to add to the flashiness of the stream. So it's going to, when you get a hard rain. Let's see, what else did I have to mention here? Oh, basically, this, this just, this does not seem like it's in keeping with the vision that I moved here as a new resident, purchasing a home. It doesn't seem like it's in keeping with what the vision is for this town. It just doesn't. And, and you know what, it's like, if you want to draw more people, more of the younger people here, you've got to go with, with what's, these green areas, Duran Eastman Park, you know, the I Square is a fantastic project. There's a whole lot of things going in the positive for the town. And adding in Aldi's, there's plenty of places for Aldi's, I think, in Arundicote. Tops is moving. And we've also got that whole copper, copper grill area right there. I mean, it's right there. You don't have to disturb any wildlife. I understand somebody that owns that property wants to see something done with it. However, I'm just, I just don't think that this Aldi's idea, another type of strip mall, no matter how they dress it up, is going to fit in with what the residents of Arundicote want to see there. Additionally, I'm a little confused about the residential R5 and what the future plans for that is. Because when I look at that, that's got some kind of residential area painted all over it. And I just want to make sure that, I don't know what they were talking about, the bonus. But anyway, thank you for your time. And I love it here, and I hope to continue living here for quite a while.
The taxes we pay in Arundicote, east or west, are the highest in the county. There's not a lot of room for major developments since Arundicote is one of the oldest suburbs. Here, we have an excellent opportunity to use a small amount of space to satisfy a lot of people. Do I shop at Aldi's? Yes, I do. But I have to go to Lake Avenue, Webster, or Grease. While I'm, or Henrietta. While I'm there, I shop at other places. Because my taxes are high, I like living in Arundicote, I'll pay the high taxes. But I can't afford to shop at all the upscale stores or when they put the Trader Joe's in. I have to shop at Aldi's in order to pay my taxes and to live in Arundicote. I have to shop at Save-A-Lot. I have to shop at Price Right. Do I go to Danny Wegmans occasionally? Absolutely. But if I had to do that on a regular basis, no. So I have to go out of town to an Aldi's. And Mr. Rosa was right. It's green. It takes me a half an hour at the most to get in and out of Aldi's. They're not big stores. You could fit that Aldi's probably in, you know, in Wegmans three times, easily. So when I go in there, I have my bags, I get my cart, I don't have to worry about my car getting bumped, I put my quarter in, I get my cart, and I'm, and I'm in and out of there in no time at all for most of my grocery needs at a price that's quite a bit lower. So I'm, I want to see them here. And you know what? I can actually walk there. I can use the sidewalk they're thinking about putting in. As far as the water issue in the creek, Aldi's didn't invent that water problem. That should have been addressed a long time ago. It should have been addressed when Wegmans went in. It wasn't. Somebody's got to decide to take the ball on this creek. They've also said they're putting in all this equipment. The way I'm sitting back there thinking is, wait a minute, they're putting that in, they're putting that in, they're putting that in, they're diverting it, they're directing it another way. I think they're actually cutting down on the amount of flood that might occur there. So you may think I'm crazy, but I'm sorry, I think it's going to work. You need somebody in the town to take the reins and fix the creek if that seems to be the water issue that's the problem. I don't really see where the water's going to be that big a deal. These people that are talking about all this flooding, I live on Drake Drive. I don't get all rained out. I have a giant tree in my backyard that should have been coming out. It doesn't, it hasn't fallen down yet. Back to the properties. If I want to go to Kmart, I have to go out of town. If I want to go to Aldi's, I have to go out of town. If I want to go to Bacchus, I have to go back up that way. I can't pass, or no, I have to go all the way to Monroe Avenue for that. Thrifty Shopper, I can't go there anymore. The yarn shop's gone. The muffler shop's gone. Carl's Vacuum is gone. Boundaries, Gold's, Dancing With Denise, they may have relocated, but I don't think they've relocated here. I just spent $5,000 putting tile in my house. I couldn't go to Rochester Linoleum here. I had to go all the way to Brighton and then Henrietta to pick it up. So I'm trying to improve my property in Arundicote, and I can't even shop in Arundicote for half the stuff I need. And if I can, it's more expensive than what I can afford. The tax base has to be increased. There's not a lot of room. Where else are you going to put these big stores? You're not. So now a store that's a small chain is coming, or it's not a small chain, but it's a small size store. They're going to put it in there. They're going to squeeze it in, and it looks nice. I thought it was going to go the other way. They're turning it around. I think that's wonderful. I don't have a problem with that. We need more of a tax base. I can't afford to live in Arundicote anymore because this is crazy. But should I move out? No, I happen to like it.
Let's be respectful, please.
So now you're going to compare me to the riffraff that you think is going to occupy this site? Well, I'm one of the riffraff. I have to shop there. Okay? Who wants to buy my house? The property values of that have probably decreased because there's nothing I can buy here in town. So, the traffic impact, there's no traffic in the Rochester area. Come on. There's not a lot of traffic here. Move to an area of the world where 20 minutes is not, it only takes you a few miles. There's not a lot of traffic. I don't see how it's going to impact that area. I've got a lot more, but this is crazy. Thank you.
I think every speaker is due the same respect, and these outbursts are uncalled for.
Excuse me? Are you referring to me?
No. No. I wasn't speaking.
Oh, my name is Sandy Bills, and I live at 34 Dale Side Road. May I ask the developer where Dale Side is on that map to point it out? Okay, it's where I live.
You need to stay at the dais or take the portable microphone, please.
Hey, you want to take your portable mic?
First time I've done this.
Don't do karaoke.
I won't, I promise. Okay. Excuse me, show that to me again. This is Dale Side Road. This is my home. This is my neighbor across the street. We're the only two houses that are located here. The rest of the houses are here. What I'm concerned about is we've got kids now that are on the property on the other side, that are meeting after school and they stay there until it gets dark at night. Our only relief from that will be when it starts snowing and it's too cold for them to be out there. The other problem that we have is the creek. The water is what I'm concerned about. This part of my house, these are the trees. I assume that's my home, correct?
I don't know.
Looks like it is. Got a black roof, okay. The drop from here is at least 20 feet. My backyard is ground level. We had this last summer, had a tree that came down here, which is probably 60 feet tall. My grandkids were going to camp that night. Thank God they didn't because of a thunderstorm. The tree came down, missed the deck, missed the house, and missed the hot tub in this area. It went six feet into the ground. Nice thing about it, I contacted RC Shaheens. They came down, they got six estimates, they removed the tree, which was really nice. I'm more concerned about more of these trees coming down because there's so many of them. And also of the trash that we're going to have in the area, because we do get some debris in what's going into the creek. So please do not vote for this. Thank you.
My name is Lubanestrovich. I live at 35 Dale Side, across from Sandy. And my house is the most affected by this. How many feet from the house, my house currently, to where the building's going to be? Doesn't seem like very much. We already get garbage from Wegmans. I don't have a drainage problem. That stream, I'm too high up to be affected by the drainage, always dry. But everything else is the problem. Who currently owns that land behind there? Whoever's been cleaning the top where this supposed development is going to be, I have pictures of it, they were cutting down and cleaning that property and throwing it onto my property. So that is why I am definitely against development with Aldi's.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm Mike Long. I live at 48 Plaza Drive. I've heard a lot of great things about our neighborhood tonight and our do's and don'ts. But the one most important thing that I haven't heard about, which is why I live in West Arundicote, is because of the school system that we have here. And I have three children that live in this neighborhood right behind all of this. And I'm very concerned about the traffic, about the lights, the sidewalks, and the issues with my children that do not get bussed in West Arundicote. They have to walk or ride their bike, or their parents have to drive them to school. And so now when my son has to go to school to Dake or onto West Arundicote High School, he's going to have to go through this area where there's going to be a new grocery store where I don't think we need to have a grocery store. There's a grocery store across the street. There's a deli, there's lots of other nice things there. I could see anything else but another grocery store right across the street. I love Aldi's. I think it's a great place. And I'd love to see it up at the Medley Center or somewhere else where we've wasted all this tax incentive. And I really think that it's ridiculous to think that we're going to give these new incentives to somebody in a residential neighborhood in our backyard where our kids live and play and then have to walk to school every day. And so I think that I urge you to please understand that the children here in our town should be of utmost concern. And where we're putting these stores and the traffic is a major issue. So please consider that when you're thinking of this application. Thank you.
I live on 41 Loraine Drive. You can actually see my house on the map. It is the one on the far right-hand side with the white roof. The property line, my backyard, backs directly up to what is currently zoned as the R5 residential. I'm not going to continue on about the whole drainage and stream issue, but I do just want to point out the fact that as Mr. Powell was speaking, he was speaking about my parents' house, the creek does actually flood right to pretty much the house. You can see right on the map how far away that is. I do want to mention, though, that like Mrs. LaRosa and Mrs. Price, my family does shop at Aldi's. We absolutely love Aldi's. The prices are great. We love to shop there. We would love to see an Aldi's in Arundicote. We just don't want to see an Aldi's in Arundicote at that location. As Mr. Long just mentioned, and I think it was mentioned previously as well, there are a lot of vacant buildings in Arundicote. Not just along the Ridge Corridor, there are several on Hudson, the plaza directly north with the Copper Grill. Boundaries moved out, Dancing With Denise moved out. That could be repurposed. There is, of course, the old Chase Pickens building can be repurposed as well as, excuse me, as well as many other buildings throughout the town. And we'd like to see those buildings actually used instead of sitting empty and costing us more money. And we'd like to see the few natural wildlife areas that are left in the town maybe stay that way. And I understand that perhaps for the owner of the property, he may disagree, but we'd like to try. like to try and enjoy what little wildlife we do have left in this area and see improvements of our town where there is currently eyesores. Thank you.
My name is James Sheridan. I reside at 116 Brookview Drive. My observation tonight, in the presentation that's being given to us of the proposal, one thing, two things occur to me. In the existing plaza on the other side, in wintertime, we are treated to the two mountains of snow that are cleared for the people to use the parking lot to park. Here, we have a much smaller parking area, but I see no opportunity to create a mountain within it without diminishing the parking area. So what would have to happen to the snow removal? And in this respect, with the generosity of the developers, they have granted the town ownership of the road from Hudson to nowhere, reminiscent of the Alaskan Highway, which was stopped with lack of funds, if you recall that. That's notorious. So where would the, who would maintain that, since it's going to be given to the town? The town. More tax use. So in other words, we would have to bear the cost of maintenance of that. I fear that a number of things at the presentation of the developers reminds me of the history of this country, of the Indians who referred to the white man as "he who speaks with forked tongue."
Bonnie Bachman, 15 Dale Side Road. Again, unfortunately for myself, we right now face the parking lot that is 2164 Hudson Avenue. So my big concern is, looking out my window presently, I've been in front of this board before, I have that parking lot to deal with. Now, as the line of sight goes and I look, what am I going to be seeing? Retail C kind of concerns me a little. I know that's in case there's future development, but what's going to be the barrier between those two properties? What kind of landscaping are we going to have there? Presently, right now, there's plenty of tall trees. Will they remain? Are they all going to be chopped down? That is a big concern. My other big concern is, we moved here in 97, and never would I have imagined the noise that you get in this area. You have garbage trucks that have to pick up all the commercial places. Supposedly, they're not supposed to be there before 7:00. They are. They push the envelope. You have a lot of lights, so you have light pollution. Car alarms, you know, all the stuff that goes with commercial buildings. So now you're going to add another commercial building with the snow plowing that goes along with it and all that. And I guess my concern is, where's the quality of life for the neighbors who live in that area? It's a big concern. I would like to have the board think this very well before you allow another grocery store that has the issues, the garbage pickup, the plowing, the lighting. We've had so many incidents in our backyard. We've had rats running through. We've had shoplifters running through. I don't want to keep doing that anymore. Thank you.
My name is Jill Krieger. I reside at 21 Dumont Street. I think it's important and it's imperative that those of you that have spoken tonight, because you are immediately going to be impacted from this proposal, and I am not, because my property does not butt against this. But what I would encourage the board to do as they look at this proposal, is in the 42 years I've lived in this community, I think this is the first time I've been excited about a retail opportunity coming to Arundicote that I think is the right size, to be right-sized, both in its footprint, its parking lot, the green aspects of it. I shop at all the other Aldi's stores in this town and also in Ohio where my mother lives. And to the store, the clientele of that store, those stores are economically motivated to shop there. They share their quarters with one another as they return their carts. They bring their own shopping bags, and I know that seems minimal compared to flooding. But I hope you keep your mind open, and if this parcel is not looked at as the optimum spot for Aldi's, that you work with them to find them something that does work. And I also behoove you that are here tonight, because your properties are, you're looking at that as in danger, is I recall a couple of years ago, when Northgate Plaza was undergoing their fight with the neighborhood to put a Walmart in there. I don't know if any of you have been by there since that Walmart project has been finished, but that upgrade to that mall is incredible. And I do not, again, I do not own property that butts up against Northgate Plaza. But from someone who drives by and someone who now shops there that would never stop there, that's the best Walmart I think I've been in. And I actually found it as I came back from Aldi's, shopping there on Mount Reed, because that was the closest one here. So again, I behoove you to keep your mind open. I would also, maybe I missed a point, but when I found out that this was being presented tonight, I went to the Arundicote website and I tried to find information. I couldn't find anything in the planning that was newer than 2008. So I don't know where you find this stuff, but as more information comes up, I think that you really need to get out there on that website and make sure that you update people on what new information is coming in, from the pros and the cons of both sides, so that as a community, we can move forward and have everyone resolve to the best possible result for Arundicote, because then that's what we all are here for. We raised our family here. The schools are great. We don't plan on moving. The deer annoy me, but hey, they're also a good part of what Arundicote is. So that's what I would leave the board with, and that is, do a better job on communication and make sure you keep both sides informed. And it shouldn't be sides. We're in this as a community. We all win, we all lose a little, and that's another thing. You talk about the beauty of that parcel. That's maybe from your backyard, but as I drive up and down Hudson Avenue, it's an eyesore. I have, I don't know what's in there. I mean, I walk all that, and I cross the street. I wouldn't want to walk by that mess that you call wildlands from Hudson Avenue. Maybe it's beautiful from your backyard, and I'm sure it is, but it could also improve some upgrade from the street aspect, because it doesn't present a very good positive community. Thank you.
You repeatedly address the board?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, but there is a legal issue that hasn't been raised yet for the public's gratification. Richard Barone, 154 Alwood Drive. Having sat on this planning board for 14 years, I always used to have to advise the public that this board cannot, cannot make a decision on an application based upon that it's going to add to the tax base, nor can it make a decision based upon we need another grocery store or gas station. This board can only, and the attorney can correct me, but I think I'm right after 14 years on this board, this board can only make a decision based upon what is called land use. And that's based upon the town's code, zoning code, state law, on how you use the land, and that it fits the land. You cannot say, "We're going to make a decision because it's going to add to the tax base." Those arguments cannot be used, and if it does, you're going to lose in court. Number two, you cannot use it.
Wait, wait. You've already used four minutes or more.
I'm sorry. I'm done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in regards to this application at this time? Seeing none. I'm going to leave the public input open. I do agree that as more information comes, I think that we should have another, this is the pre-application conference, so I think when we have the full application, we should take some input at that point. So I'm not closing anything at this point. I guess I would like to make a motion or to declare us of lead agency, and I'd like some recommendation on your part.
I think the motion would be that the planning board indicates intent to act as lead agency and direct town staff to provide notice to all involved agencies and interested agencies too, as we identify them of that intent. Hopefully, those agencies will get back to us. They have 30 days, but if they get back to us quicker than that, then you can act as the lead agency.
Mr. Prima, what agency should we consider as?
Well, right now, I think we've identified that we want to send it to...
MCDOT.
MCDOT, Town Board, Zoning Board of Appeals. I think we identified DEC is interested. Larry, I don't know if you had any others you would put on the list.
I don't mind considering the Conservation Board interested or HIP interested.
Sure, I think you could do that.
HIP is not a board.
They're not a board.
HIP isn't a board, I'm sorry. Conservation Board? You referred to the Architecture Review Board, but I don't believe that that's in any standing at this point. I believe it's the Architecture Review Committee, not a board. The other boards that were copied on the library were Monroe County Water Authority, Monroe County Department of Health, Monroe County Planning Department. We can copy all those boards. I agree with that. I guess I don't need to parrot your motion, but, or reiterate it, but I would like to make the motion that we declare the intent to make ourselves lead agent on this project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. We do have some meeting minutes.
I do. For the board, one thing. Do you remember this handout from our workshop?
Yep.
I projected down to the front setback of the plaza where Copper Grill is, and the Aldi's front edge is at least 20 feet by scale closer to the road. So one of the statements that this is not as close to the road as that building is not true. It is closer, and I'll give you a better dimension via email tomorrow.
All right. I do think that there's some engineering data that we might want of the client, also just a little bit more relationship. I don't disagree with that point. Do we want to consider these meeting minutes before we leave?
I make a motion, we put them off till later. It's been a long night.
Michelle, is it better that we do them tonight, as far as you're concerned? You sure?
Some of them are quite old, you know. So we have a motion and a second, right?
To adjourn?
Not yet, no. Postponing minutes.
We don't have to make a motion for that.
No, we don't. It's a code of day, though.
Not even on the agenda.
It's not, never on the agenda that we review meeting minutes, but they're in our packet, and it's our due diligence.
We don't have to make a motion. I do move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well...
We want to close the meeting, because we're getting ready to leave.
I'm not the one to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
We need a second? All those in favor?
Go. Aye. Thank you.
So, you know what I don't?